This is a special meeting of the Community Redevelopment and Housing Commission. Today is February 28, 2019. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Ready to begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
May be seated.
Madam Recording Secretary, please take roll call. Commissioner Aguinaga, Commissioner Garcia, Commissioner Perez.
Present.
Chair Ramos.
Present.
Commissioner Santana.
Present.
Commissioner Ursua. Commissioner Tardif.
Present.
Commissioner Limon. Commissioner Frazier.
Present.
Commissioner Vasquez.
Present.
We have quorum. Thank you. Seeing a quorum, the meeting is officially called to order. Now moving on to the consent calendar, this is time for the commission to consider matters under consent calendar. Items include 1 through 4. Do any members have any corrections to the minutes or items they wish to pull for separate discussion or abstain on?
Make the motion.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. The consent calendar is approved by unanimous consent with a vote of 4 to 0. We will now consider matters under the business calendar. The first item on the business calendar is item number 5, approve the Housing Authority Annual Plan. Will staff report on the matter?
Thank you very much Chairwoman Ramos. This is the presentation of our annual plan that's brought before our commission and then to city council every year. This is a requirement for our housing choice voucher program and uses a standard HUD template, a standard template provided by HUD that we complete on an annual basis and then submit back to HUD on behalf of our housing authority in our community. The plan is informed by an outreach process through our resident advisory board. Our housing authority does a very substantial mail out to not have, we don't have a small advisory board. We actually invite every single active participant in the city of Santa Ana who's receiving Section 8 voucher assistance to participate on a resident advisory board. And we translate that invitation in Spanish, English, and Vietnamese to make it as widely known as possible. And while in previous years, we have had more participation, more numbers of families participate. This year, we only had 22 members of our resident advisory board participate to inform the creation of our annual plan. Besides that, the 45-day public notice was published in the Orange County Register and the public comment period ends on March 19th in which we are hoping with the approval by the commission to bring the annual plan before the Housing Authority Board/City Council for final approval before submitting it to HUD prior to April 1st. There are some accomplishments I do want to highlight that we described in our progress report under B6. First, in terms of expanding the supply of affordable housing, what makes this goal a goal very difficult to achieve is that HUD only funds us up to a certain amount every single year for our Section 8 program year to year. So those opportunities that come available to our community and to our staff to apply for additional vouchers, we take those opportunities intensely seriously and we apply for everyone that comes available. So this past year HUD issued in RFP through something called a PIH Notice, Public and Indian Housing Notice, 2017-17 for 100 HUD VAS project-based vouchers. Those are vouchers specifically for homeless veterans referred from the VA. And we were awarded 100 HUD VAS vouchers under that PIH notice. And then again, under PIH Notice 2018-7, we submitted an application again and HUD awarded us 105 HUD VAS vouchers specific for homeless veterans. In total, while you see on paper 205 vouchers, you translate that into 205 assisted units receiving rental assistance and housing assistance from our housing authority on a monthly basis and then on an annual basis year to year. That combined award, the financial amount of that combined award is over $2 million per year and additional rental assistance funds for homeless veterans here in the city of Santa Ana administered by our housing authority. The second RFP that we applied for was under the 2017 Mainstream Voucher Program. This program had not received funding from HUD in several years. And when we saw the NOFA, we immediately submitted an application. Through a very thorough, detailed application submitted in partnership with the Illumination Foundation, we were successful to receive an award of 50 mainstream vouchers. These vouchers are for non-elderly disabled, or non-elderly persons with a disability who are homeless in our city. And our partnership with the Illumination Foundation means that any applicants or referrals for these homeless, for these vouchers, must come through the Illumination Foundation. We've also recently entered into a partnership with the OC Healthcare Agency to receive qualified and eligible referrals from them for these vouchers. The financial value of those vouchers is approximately $500,000. So in total, during this previous fiscal year under review for our annual plan, we've brought in an additional $2.5 million in rental assistance funds to provide rental assistance for targeted families in our community. Under goal number 2, I do want to highlight that this was the first year that we were able to certify as a high-performing housing authority. In previous years, we have a very thorough, very detailed quality control program that we administer for our program, but the data was not supporting our self-certification to certify as a high-performing housing authorities. And on a side note, some housing authorities will manipulate their data and self-certify as a high performer even though their data may not show that they're actually a high performer. Well, we take that obligation very seriously. And this was the first year that our housing authority was successful and able to certify as a high-performing housing authority based on true and accurate data that we obtained through our quality control reviews. As you'll see, for the two indicators that have the most impact on the quality and integrity of our services, clearly our casework and our inspections. For our casework, under CMAP indicator number 3, we audited 420 files. Whereas HUD's minimum requirement, if we were just to meet the baseline minimum requirement from HUD, HUD only requires us to audit 34 files total. So we audited 420. And for our inspections, we audited 84 inspections even though HUD only requires us to audit 32 inspections. And we actually take that responsibility even one step further and we provide training and support to our inspector to advise them whether or not the original inspection was even done correctly. HUD's system for performance management only requires that the housing authority actually conduct the quality control inspection. It doesn't actually require the housing authority to certify whether or not the original inspection was even done correctly or not. So we're very thorough, very detailed to ensure the quality and integrity of our casework and our inspections for assisted families. And then in terms of the utilization of our funds, which is very much always a core responsibility for any grant-funded program, to ensure that the funding that they're receiving is fully utilized for their program beneficiaries. We utilized 102% of our funding received from HUD for calendar year 2018. You may ask, how did you utilize 102%? The 2% was reserve funds that were carried over from the previous year that we were able to draw upon and receive from HUD during that calendar year. I am also proud to report that we hired a workforce specialist 1 on February 2, 2018. It's a very unique position that is housed in our work center. In most cases, in most housing authorities across the country, your position is a family self-sufficiency coordinator and it's housed within your housing authority. We actually instead took a workforce specialist position from our work center, hired it as our own workforce specialist for our housing authority specific for our assisted families and then co-located them in our works, in our work center. But they are providing self-sufficiency case management services to our assisted families from our work center. So a very, again, a very strategic effort with the hiring of our workforce specialist 1 on February 2, 2018. And besides that, staff are available for any questions by the commission.
Do any commissioners have questions?
Just a comment.
Go ahead, Commissioner Perez.
Two comments. I did see where we had 22 residents and it's approximately 1,700. And I know we had a conversation earlier, just a better way of trying to outreach to our residents if it's through social media. But I just think we need to get a little bit higher volume of representation. I understand that it's a high-need population, very difficult at times to touch base, but some additional strategies on reaching out. And I just did want to highlight the utilization of funds and the audits is something that I feel that you guys did an excellent job, specifically the audits. I mean, I think percentage-wise, I've never seen anything like that. So congratulations very well. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other commissioner comments?
Just have one question. I get confused because we throw around the project-based vouchers as well as the general access vouchers. How many vouchers, project and standard Section 8 vouchers, do we have currently active in Santa Ana?
It's a great question. So we currently are authorized by HUD for up to 2,699 tenant-based vouchers. Now, under HUD's regulations, we're allowed to project-base up to 20% of those tenant-based vouchers. That's when you take a regular tenant-based Section 8 voucher and you convert it to a project-based voucher and dedicate it to a single project or in a single unit, in a single project, over a 20-year term. And so of the number of project-based vouchers that we have to date that are currently receiving assistance, we have 95, yes, 95 project-based vouchers that are receiving assistance from our housing authority. We have additional project-based vouchers, those HUD VAS project-based vouchers that you see in the progress report, that's in addition to the 2,699 because they were additional awards. Why would our housing authority decide to project-base those tenant-based HUD VAS vouchers? Because it's a more effective and efficient way to serve homeless veterans at a single site as opposed to trying to lease up homeless veterans at various scattered sites.
Okay.
And I have that answer to a question.
It did, so is that to say that the budgeting that's in process over on Harbor, those vouchers were standardized Section 8 vouchers and then were converted into the VAS vouchers? Or were those additional awardings?
So those are the HUD VAS vouchers that we awarded under those PIH notices that you see referenced in the report where we, where instead of using those HUD VAS vouchers as tenant-based vouchers, we converted those to project-based vouchers and awarded that to the budgeted project.
So those were out of the 2,600?
Not out of the 2,600, it's in addition to. It's in addition to.
Okay, so that means, so at maximum right now, we have 2,699, all-inclusive?
Up to a maximum. If HUD were to fund us, fully fund us, we could assist up to 2,699 families. In actuality, we're only able to assist on average about 2,600 families throughout the calendar year.
Okay, thank you.
Are there any other commission member questions? Well, since this is still a housing issue, our tenant commissioners are able to vote, so we're still.
Yes.
Thank you. And then I have a question. I'm just, I really enjoy seeing that tenants are being very honest with their feedback and the comments that they're providing to the housing authority. So my question is, how is the housing authority reviewing everything that tenants are sharing? And how are you implementing any changes to address their concerns that they've expressed?
Thank you for that question. Do you want to start?
We review all the comments and whatever it is that their concerns are. For example, some of the concerns that I had in my group were needing more affordable units. So obviously, that's a tough one to meet because they don't, you know, the vacancy rate is just so low. Such as, maybe I got another comment about saying, I wish I would get a call back right away. So these are discussions that we have on our staff meeting about concerns that came up during that meeting. And we talk about our policy and we need to return phone calls right away, things like that. I think I did, the group that I had, which was the Spanish one, were the most worried. They said that we were doing a good job, we talked about the waiting list. And I'm not really sure if those are the comments that you were reading and that they are okay with the way the lottery worked, for example, back in 2015. And also that they feel comfortable that we're helping the needy, the homeless, and taking action on that.
Thank you. Yeah, one of the main comments that I saw that was of concern to me was around the phone calls. So people expressing that their phone calls aren't being returned at all or that they're not being returned in a timely manner. So I'm happy that that has been brought up to staff. I think that's very important to ensure that individuals are having their questions answered in a timely manner. And then the other one that I saw, I think it might have only been mentioned once, but is the accessibility to the application. So that one, I think one of the responses said that it's difficult to complete the application on a computer because not everybody is computer literate.
Right, so when we started asking the question about what we did in 2015 and how it was online, we also, you know, they also shared with us about maybe not knowing how to get into the computer and/or maybe not having a computer or not having anyone to help them. And so after I explained to them what our process was, which was having other agencies assist us with the process in addition to us having the kiosk at the front desk. And while those 30 days that we were open, all of our staff was available. If I think someone would call and say, I can't do the application, we would actually get them into the office and have them apply. We would help them apply. So they felt a little bit more comfortable. But I did ask them to still write it down, we wanted to have that on record. And then I also explained to them about checking their status on the waiting list. Like right now, that we still have close to 3,000 still on the waiting list. I said, I made sure that, I let them know that there's always a way of checking, whether it's by in writing or sending us an email if they can or if they come into the office writing a little note so they can get a phone call back or a letter. Although it's just online, there's other ways of checking, applying or checking. We always have to have that available.
Okay.
They were okay with that as well.
Okay, that's great. And that was what I was wondering, I was just wondering how city staff was, if at all, helping residents that didn't have access to a computer or didn't have anybody that was available to help them. So I'm very happy to hear that during those 30 days, staff is made available.
Yes, we had an office with about four laptops there. And then we had the kiosk and then we had other offices available just with the regular desktop. And if anyone called because they didn't understand it through the language or they were computer literate, we were always there to help them. We made sure that everyone was assisted with that.
Okay, thank you. Are there any additional commission member comments or questions?
Yes, please, Madam Chair. Do we synthesize all the responses? And the reason I ask the question is, we're all going to be up here next year and we're going to get these new questions. But the reality is, if our residents and those that we're serving are saying, these are our needs, then it would be important for us to strategically make sure we're supporting them. So I know when I went through them, I saw quite a few that had issues with utilities and the fairness of how utilities, you know, are being billed per unit where some are in a five-unit, one, five residents, one resident. So, and then the other question that goes with that would be, there's some in Spanish and some Vietnamese. Do we have the actual translation of those?
So I think, for example, for me, I have one of the sheets and I narrated basically what I heard that day. And I do my narrating in English, so they spoke to me in Spanish. And so I attach that with all the other responses. But no, we don't translate every single response into English. And the same goes for the Vietnamese group. So the three Vietnamese-speaking persons we have in the department, I believe they do the same thing. They take one of the questionnaires and they summarize what they heard and what the needs were. We want to make sure that, you know, somebody understands.
And then do we summarize all of the languages?
Yes, so if you go into the packet, I think right before the Spanish, mine summary.
Okay.
And then you have the English one that obviously we all can understand and then the Vietnamese as well.
Okay. But we don't combine them all together? So let's say 15 families are having issues with phone. We know this is our percentage here, or just?
We don't do that, but we do address all the concerns, you know, whether they are in the Vietnamese group, the English group, or the Spanish group.
Thank you very much.
And just to confirm, this is submitted to HUD exactly as we're seeing it, page by page, with every individual response?
Yes.
Yep, and posted on their website as well.
Yes, so if you look at our annual plan last year, you will be able to see our responses from last year.
Thank you. Commissioner Frazier?
I guess I just had a question and it just dawned on me because my brain wasn't in the right direction. So just so I understand my position with this commission, my position is to be a voice for other people that are on the Section 8 voucher program. Is that correct? Am I correct in that?
Yes, that's accurate.
I checked back to make sure. And I'm just curious, what can we do to ensure that I'm part of some of these groups in the future so that I can voice the concerns that I hear to these groups? Because I look back and I didn't know that this occurred back on 22nd of January. Otherwise, I would be present.
We can pull the record of where we mailed you the invitation and provide that to you.
Okay.
If you'd like. We keep a record.
I have a copy of all the labels, all the people that were mailed out.
And then I get concerned because I don't have one at home, so I don't remember. So then I get concerned with the mail system. And how can I further, you know, how can I step up my game to ensure that I'm present for these things as well?
Maybe what we can do next year is announce it right before it happens so that you're all aware.
Yeah, I think it's a good, we try and, we do try and proactively inform you, inform the commission of various workshops and things coming up. But that was a failure on my part to not send you guys an additional email to notify you. Yeah, we'll make sure that that happens next year. Yeah, yeah, of course.
Thank you. Are there any additional comments or questions?
I just would like to clarify, if you said that there's, excuse me, that there was an in-house computer lab has been established to help?
That was during the 2015 application intake process from July 1, 2015 to July 30, 2015. But at any time, if you walk into our office, we have a kiosk that you're able to use.
A very expensive kiosk, I might add.
Before Jackson's time.
That kiosk is, it was quite a heavy investment. I think it was over $2,000 or so for that, just that kiosk that we provide in our lobby.
Just one, and we still are taking applications from US veterans that live or work in the city. So periodically, I do get the walk-ins and make sure I assist them when they're finding whatever issues they're having, creating an account or they're having issues with the online application. I have them come in and I'm able to assist them there.
Oh, good, great, okay, thank you.
Thank you. Are there any last commissioner questions or comments? Great, seeing as there are none, does the commis- Are there any members of the public that would like to speak on the matter? If so, you may fill out a request to speak form with the recording secretary. You have 3 minutes to speak. Also, we will not accept any additional request to speak cards once we begin the public comment session. If you haven't already done so, please give your form to the recording secretary. Seeing as there are no public comments, do we have a motion to approve item 5, approve the Housing Authority Annual Plan?
So moved.
Thank you, Commissioner Tardif. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Commissioner Tardif Frazier. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 All those opposed, please say no. The motion is approved with unanimous consent with a vote of 6-0. The second item on the business calendar is item number 6, Community Development Block Grant Program for fiscal year 2018 through 2019. Ladies and gentlemen, this is the time and place for the public hearing of the Community Redevelopment, of the Community Redevelopment and Housing Commission of the City of Santa Ana for the Community Development Block Grant CDPG program for the fiscal year 2019 through 2020. I just want to announce that we are validating parking. If anybody needs validation, you can approach our recording secretary. Thank you. And presenters, you will have a 2-minute and a 1-minute warning sign. So at this time, we would like to hear from the organizations who submitted an application for the Community Development Block Grant Program Funds for fiscal year 2019 through 2020. Staff have prepared a schedule of speakers from each organization. Each speaker will have 7 minutes to present their proposal to the commission. Commissioners may then discuss the proposal and ask questions of the applicant for up to 5 minutes before the next speaker is invited to present. If there is anyone else who would like to speak about the proposal, you will have the opportunity to present your comments at the end of the presentations. I would like to invite our first speaker to present their proposal and that's going to be Nati Salzner, Neutral Ground, for their Summer Nightlights program.
Hello, Commissioner, my name is Nati Alvarado and I'm happy to be here. I appreciate your time. So Neutral Ground, this is our, for our after-school program, this is the second year that we received it, which was last year, the 18-19. We got it also in 17-18.
So this is for the after-school program and not the Summer Nightlights program?
Well, I'm going to do the Summer Nightlights second. You want me to do the Summer Nightlights now?
Either is fine, I just want to make sure.
Yeah, I didn't know which, yeah, I didn't realize.
It's okay, you can start with this one. So everybody, this is the after-school program and after summer.
Okay.
Thank you.
Cool. All right, so once again, my name is Nati and our after-school is after-school intervention, community intervention, what we do in the streets. And some of the work that we've been doing, myself personally been doing here in Santa Ana. that we've been doing, myself personally been doing here in Santa Ana for over twenty-five years. And we're honored to be able to get the grant last year, twenty-seventeen-eighteen, and then this last year, eighteen-nineteen. We've been running an after-school program. We collaborated with the San Antonio High School District, and we've been able to go into the Townsend Myrtle area, working in all that street there. There's a lot of, you know, stuff going on in them streets there, and we've been able to come in there and, at Lauren Grissette. And so we're there on Tuesdays and Thursdays afternoon immediately following school. And we also are working along with some of the teachers are coming in and doing tutoring, along with, we have other tutors coming in from Vanguard University, a couple other places, and Santa Ana College, that we just, tutors that we've been having coming in to assist us. It's been really good for our students, it's helped them quite a bit. We're averaging from eighteen, twenty students, so we've been pretty solid with it. We've also, there's not funding through the program, but we've been able to, not every Tuesday and Thursday, but here and there, you know, have pizza and stuff for them. The beautiful thing about it is that they're not coming because of the pizza, they're coming because of the, they want their grades. As Lauren Grissette is a credit recovery school, so it's really helping those students, ad-ris students in that area. We have within that, with this program, because we also work in the schools, we work in Chavez High School, Lauren Grissette High School, Godinez High School, and just in the community in general, and a lot of the schools that call us out. But what this grant has allowed us to do, it's allowed us to do the after-school, where the kids are outside of that structured environment, and we're able to work with them, we've built relationships with them throughout the day. But in the evening, we're able to do after-school home visits with the parents, get the family engagement in part, bringing, you know, inside of this thing. And so that's been a big thing for us, it's really helped us a lot, because we're able to work in the streets with them, after-school. And the majority, a lot of our kids don't go there, it's a different population. This population, many of them are not going to your Boys and Girls Clubs, they're not going to your after-school programs. These kids are, it's just a different, I don't know how to say it, but these are kids that we're able to work with. And that's what the city has really helped us to build this relationship with it, because with this type of individual, or these young individuals, it's all based on relationship with them, to allow us to get into their hearts, to allow us to work with them. And what's happened is that when we've had violence in our city, as we could go, let me see, we've been able to serve seventy-five families started, we have seventy-seven on this, and that's it, it was from the second quarter, and we're not even done yet. So we've been able to hit quite a few families and get them signed up. The issue that we run into this is the issue with ICE or the documentation, that has been very, very hard under the federal. It's been really hard, because they'll take us in, they'll sign the application, but we have to get documentation there, check stub or where they work at. That's been a real, real battle for us. But we're doing it, and it's based, once again, on our relationship with them. We do crisis interventions and responders to crisis situations, we've done funerals, we just finished doing, yesterday I was at, one of the funeral, there was three boys were shot in our neighborhood, boys that I worked directly with, the boy that was killed, I've been working with him since Community Day over five years, he was a part of my father-to-father program, a program I have to help boys fourteen to twenty-two that are young dads, that don't have a dad. He was a part of that, he was a very big part of my life. It was, you know, it was very difficult, and I guess it's the work we do. And what's going on with, what's allowed CDBG, what it allowed is, like even when that murder or when that shooting happened, before it was even out, I was getting texts from kids from the community that know us. And that's where this CDBG has really helped with us, because we're able to get with this community, was it a gang shooting, was it, you know, this, that, or the other. And it's all behind the relationship that we've been able to develop, not only within the last two years, from many years back, but this has really allowed me to put individuals in the homes, in the off-hours, and all of that. We were able to do a Christmas giveaway to a lot of our kids, we were able to take them toys to the young kids. So in all in all, the CDBG, the after-school, community intervention work has really helped us, because we've been, we're working with a lot of kids from the Townsend Myrtle, we're working with them from the Evergreen, McFadden, not McFadden, Madison area, from the Air Troop area, around the Alzada Park area. So we've been able to cover a lot, but there's a lot of work to do out there. Our streets are, there's just a lot of work, you know, in the community, and I really hope that we could continue this, where we could continue to do the work that we've been doing, that we've established within our community, to help bring around the violence and to have community engagement. So, there's the first piece.
Thank you. Are there any commission member questions or comments? Commissioner Perez?
Nati, how you doing today?
I'm good, thank you.
Nati, you've been a pillar in our community, you've done some unbelievable work. I'm the first one to attest, when I sat on that child death review board, if there was something in the streets that I needed to know, you'd be the first person I'd call.
Thank you.
I commend you for the work that you do. Nati, well-written program, just one quick question. As you're working with these students and doing the work, is there a way that you're able to track decrease of youth violence? I saw here in your proposal and your outputs, some of the things that you're doing, is there a way that you're tracking attendance, like students not getting suspended? Is there a mechanism that you're working with on that?
Yeah, we definitely do casework with them. And we have, the beautiful thing about it is that we're very directed, we're very committed, connected with the school district to our city, which allows us to have access to their grades and to everything else. So any kids that are falling off the map, we're getting referrals with them, so we're working directly with them. But you know, Jim, at the end of the day, it's like this boy, I worked with him for five years, five years. And I really, so when we track that and the success of it, it's difficult, because there's such a pool out there. You know, the boy was wanting to be a part of it, reaching out to me all the time, and yet, there was still that other stuff. But we are tracking him, we're are graduating them, we walked graduation last year, the year before, one girl, Perla, when she was sleeping in the laundromat, we walked her through graduation. Another boy, Martin, he's up in Oregon now with a family, he was one of the toughest kids. We went, I put him through sunburst, he graduated at Chavez, we walked him all the way through. He's not doing crime, he's doing very well. He has a little baby, he's working, I just sent him his transcripts two weeks ago from Chavez, he needed his transcripts, because he got his first paycheck, and he needed that to show that he was a resident of California, so he could get that. So yes, there are things that we are tracking them, through just other people that are staying in touch with us.
Excellent.
I hope that answers your question.
No, no, definitely. Nati, I also know, I'm looking at last year's numbers, and last year, looks like first year receiving CDBG funds, so out of the eighty-two, you did reach fifty-one, but I'm looking at this year, you've already reached seventy-five out of the seventy-seven, which is probably about ninety-nine percent.
Yeah.
Lessons learned, what, like what did you learn as you grew through this process to increase that number?
Well, the first year, I think I had a real big vision, and I thought that I could just, I was gonna get a bunch of kids, get them signed up. It don't work like that, you know? Once again, with our immigration stuff going on, with the families, I could get the kid, I could get, but once I get into signed-up documentation, the parents love you, they welcome you, but once you ask for documentation, they shut the door, they're not going no more. And that was, that was last year, and going into Summer Night Lights has truly helped us a lot also, plus just being able to understand it and how we do our sign-ups. Because the first year, we didn't know, it was, you know, it was a lot of learning, all the processes of it. So I think, I think a lot of it was, was I just had maybe, maybe, you know, I ordered five Big Macs, I could only eat one, you know, that's what it came down to. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Frazier?
Just so I'm clear, this is the Neutral Ground, or is this the Neutral Ground Summer Night Lights?
Just the Neutral Ground.
Okay, that's it. No, I have no question.
Thank you. Commissioner Tardif?
No questions.
Thank you. Commissioner Vasquez?
No questions.
Thank you. Commissioner Santana? Thank you. I do have a few questions, just first, thank you for the work that you're doing. I know it's very tough work, but you're still doing it, so I really thank you sincerely. And I'm just wondering, my first question is, how many students are enrolled at Lauren Grissette? Do you know?
The high school consists of about three hundred.
Three hundred, okay.
On a good day, they show up. So the high school's about three hundred.
Okay. And then you're proposing to serve one hundred and twenty-five students, correct?
Yes, but that's overall, that's not from Chavez. You asked, are you asking regarding...
So with the neutral, with the after-school program, you're planning to serve one hundred and twenty-five students?
Well, those, for next year, those numbers, yeah, I think we could get it, you know, we could get close to that, because you've got kids coming in and coming out, we're signing out. They may not come, you know, from day one of school year, what would be twenty-nineteen, to the end of twenty-twenty, but we will be enrolling in people, because a lot of those kids come in, they get their credits for credit recovery, and then they go back to their, where their Valley, Santa Ana, you know, Century, whatever. So, I mean, our hope is that.
So would the one hundred and twenty-five just be from Lauren Grissette, or from Chavez as well?
No, they would mainly be from that area, but when we look at the people that we're working with, it's not, under that, it's not just the after-school, it's on a whole. Now, we're working other kids from other neighborhoods, that we're actually working with them at their homes, maybe they're not coming to the after-school, but they're a part of Neutral Ground, they're a part of Nati's House program. We're able to work and be involved in their lives, and school and what's going on. But as you know, our city's so blocked up, and some of those kids, they can't cross over. It'd be great, but it's a safety issue for them.
Okay, thank you, those are all my questions.
Yeah.
Thank you. And now you would like to begin presenting on your Summer Night Lights program.
Okay, I would like to open up with, Dave, if you could help me with a video. This is a short video from our Summer Night Lights program that I would like to show you.
Tiring, time-consuming, but you know what? It's all worth it.
Okay, well, that was our Summer Night Lights program. That was, as you know, I don't know if you know, but it's ran in over forty parks in Los Angeles. Last year was the very first pilot program we did here. So we walked into unknown territory, but we had a great time. We had, we served over eighty-three families, I mean, immediate, actual, no, on our survey that we did. Eighty-two percent of those completed the survey, lived in the immediate area, they were actual, at the park that day. One hundred percent of those who completed the survey said they felt, and let me just go over this with you, we had, we did a survey, a pre and a post-survey on it. We had kids from zero all the way up to eighty-five individuals that came out to the park. We were out there in the evenings, in the hot summer nights, we were able to feed everybody every single night that we were there, and that's it, there wasn't funded through the program, we couldn't buy food, but we had sponsorships, we fed everybody, the whole park, we fed them every night that we were out there. We were able to, I contacted Santa Ana Police Department, and I asked them about, if they could give me the numbers of police calls from three years back, last year, this year. In twenty, in twenty, let me see, in twenty-seventeen, there was thirty-five police calls in the month of July to Alzada Park. When we were there, there was fifteen at that, within that park in that month, and I got this through the Santa Ana Police Department for that month. And some of those are just called because of a parking dog or whatever. But we didn't, the gang unit did not come on the park not one time, we didn't have not one incident, there was families there. And I would say that Summer Night Lights was, there was families that came out to that park, that would never come to the park. They came out, they were able to meet parents, we had from haircuts, volleyball, basketball, one of the biggest games was dodgeball, we had soccer, we had softball with them, we had snow cones, we had brought out the Santa Police Department with us, they did their whole, their K-9 unit. So it was, it was a, I personally think it was a true success to be there at that park. And I think the biggest success was that there was no violence, there was nothing that took place, and we were able to bring that whole community together in the city right there. So I really hope that we're able to go back and continue to work on what we did, because one of the biggest things was the kids telling us, you know, they were actually crying, they were like, you know, "Why are you leaving, you know, are you gonna be able to come back?" And that all depends, we still went back for Christmas also and took care of some of the kids there, but I really hope that it's not a one-and-done this year, that we could go back and continue, because we learned a lot. We learned a whole lot this last Summer Night Lights, so I really hope that we go back there and, you know, just build off of what we're doing.
Thank you. I'll begin on my left this time for commissioner comments. Vice Chair Santana?
I'll keep you back here, please.
Of course. Commissioner Vasquez?
Morning.
Do you have any questions or comments?
No.
Thank you. Commissioner Tardif?
Thank you for your presentation, Nati. Looks like you're doing a great job.
Thank you, sir.
Keep it up.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Commissioner Frazier?
Thank you for your presentation. I was curious, in particular, your Saturday Night Lights, how many years has that program itself been?
It was a pilot program last year.
So last year was the pilot, okay. What I'm curious about is, and I know that the goal with grant funding, based on my experience, is that you want to get the full award, but very often, that full award is not given, and it looks like last year that we awarded you fifty-one thousand on a percentage of what you had requested. What I'm curious about is, in the event that you, that the program is not funded at full value, to where we're closer to your minimum, or anywhere in between there, what parts of, what components of the program have you prioritized as far as being able to continue to fund, and what parts of the program will probably, I don't like using this word, but what will suffer as a result of not being funded?
I think, you know, we had like eighty-five volunteers. We had a meeting, we had a full bunch of people that I'm connected to that came out and volunteered. We had a meeting, we had a full bunch of people that I'm connected to that came out to volunteer all the time, set up, break down. We hired 14 youth from that immediate area. And I think, and then I had to hire people that oversaw, like, all the children's setup, you know, the sports, just, you know, just all the key places. Um, so I, I, I think one of the, the biggest thing that really helped a lot of it was, because our summer programs for our kids. I mean, we had parents come out and say, "Thank you so much for giving my, my child, uh, a summer job," because they would just sat in their room all summer. And so, in, in assisting our, our youth in the community, because they were the faces of it, and they were the ones that drove it. So when the cuts happened, uh, we cut a lot of things back, or we weren't able, because we didn't know either. So we were just trying to make it happen, bare-knuckles, and getting people to come out. And, um, I think what the, the cutback is, is it's, it's the help that goes, people will volunteer, and we got good volunteers, but we need those core people that we know that's gonna be there at 4:30 and stay till 11:00 at night, set up and break down everything. So probably the, the, the staffing is what gets hit on it.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you, Commissioner Perez?
So, Nati, kind of on lessons learned, I'm very familiar with LA County's program. And I know, first-year pilot, you're kind of shooting from the hip, and, um, you know, as I saw the pictures on Facebook, on videos and from all the colleagues and coworkers. Um, a lot of times in LA County, they focus on themes, if it's a, you know, basketball theme, sports, if it's, uh, activity and so forth. I, I just think, um, I know we've also switched you from, uh, LMC to an LMA, so the numbers really aren't what we're looking at specifically, um, because sometimes it can be very difficult to reach a specific goal or number.
Correct, on that one, you know, you know, Ms. Perez, on that one, we got the numbers. We had over 1,500 people come through that park. We got the numbers. The issue is the, is the validation.
The requirements and the audits, yeah.
What, what the HUD asks for.
And, and unfortunately, a lot of times, you know, when you're running a federal program, at the end of the day, it's what they ask for. Now, I, I think staff worked with you, and we were able to switch that, so I don't think those, that's a concern moving forward. But my question more is, is that, as strategy-wise, and like kind of going back, lessons learned, you know, because it's one thing to, to come back before of us. I mean, we have so many individuals that spoke on Tuesday, quite a few that are ready to speak to us for money, for funding, you know, and as we look at it, is what new strategies, what new things, what new themes, what new types of programming? You know, because I think at the end of the day, the population that you serve, you have to be innovative. It can't be the same thing, you know that, you know? So, one thing, if you have thought about it, you know, what are some, and if not, like, yes, definitely take, take a look at some different themes and, and ways. Because at the end of the day, it's about mainstreaming all of our communities, you know, and it's about that. And I think there's very few organizations that do what you can do. And, you know, you continue to be more than our city, our schools, and, and, and the good work that you're doing. Um, so, and, and it's really not even really a question, but I would say, as, as you continue looking, as continuing forward, a recommendation is looking, looking at, you know, those types of themes and, and areas to engage and continue to grow the program. So thank you, presentation was...
The themes were great, the theme, we did do themes with the kids, and, and like one theme was a superhero night.
Yeah.
And they all made capes, and, you know, one kid was carrying the cape, like, for a week, you know what I mean? So, you know, but yes, there's a lot, and Bree, you know, was really one, young lady that works with me. But there's, there's a lot of things that we looked at that we need to, that we want to do better. You know, registration, just all of it, you know?
Perfect, perfect, thank you very much.
Thank you, and I have no additional questions or comments, just thank you for, for what you're doing.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, good, thank you so much, you guys.
I would like now to invite our next speaker to present their proposal, that's gonna be Orange County Children's Therapeutic Arts Center for their Willard Neighborhood Crime Prevention and Intervention Proposal.
Chairman?
Go ahead, Commissioner Frazier.
Are we not seeing an Orange County Fair Housing Council either?
Uh, they're at 6:30.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Commissioners. My name is Dr. Anna Jimenez, and I'm the Executive Director of the Orange County Children's Therapeutic Arts Center. We've been, uh, in operation here in the city of Santana, for those of you that don't know, we've been here for 19 years. Yay! So, um, to my left, I'd like to introduce to you, uh, Principal Amy Scruton from Willard Middle School, and Kelly Crowe, School Counselor, and they both are gonna say a few words before we watch a little video, okay?
Good afternoon, and thank you for, for listening to us for just a few minutes. Um, I am the very proud principal at Willard Intermediate School, and I just wanted to put in context, I'm sure, things that you already know, living here in Santa Ana, but, um, we have a little over 700 students, of those 700 students, 170 of them qualify for special education, and about 30% of them are classified as homeless, and we have a very large, um, foster youth population as well for the middle schools here in Santa Ana. So, our needs are really great, and our challenges are great, but we provide a lot of amazing, uh, programs for our kids, and one of them is using the arts for everything. We are a turnaround arts school, um, that was a program that was started by Michelle Obama, uh, when, when President Obama was still in the White House, and this is our third year of completing that, and we will be continuing with that. And so we're really fortunate to have our partnership with, uh, people like, uh, Anna, that help us to make sure that the arts are available to all of our kids, because we use the arts, um, through to make school more engaging for our students. So I'm gonna let Ms. Y say a few more things, and then...
So part of our requirements for, uh, turnaround arts is that we do have, um, they don't come in and just write us a check in turnaround arts, and, and we spend the money and, and then it's gone. Part of the program is for us to connect with our local, um, partners and businesses, and with the city, with, um, all the organization, organizations that can support our school. Um, so OCTAC has been absolutely amazing. Um, one of the most, one of the really important services they provide through this grant is, uh, mental health services. We have, um, two therapists that, um, take on individual cases, case management for our students that have, are in need of mental health. We used to have to refer our students to agencies outside, and when you have working parents that can't get their kids to those appointments, uh, during the day or at night, um, it, the kids end up falling through the cracks and not getting those services. But to have someone on campus that they can check in with, um, aside from their school counselor, which is what I do, um, but to have a mental health therapist, um, is just invaluable. And so, these, um, we have an intern and a therapist right now, one through Olive Crest, and then we also have an intern who runs, uh, groups, um, social skills groups, self-esteem groups, anger management, um, behavioral groups. And so that's just been an amazing resource for us, we're so lucky to have that. Um, also, I run a dance team and dance club through the, um, part of what we do through turnaround arts is not just have exterior clubs through the arts, but we, which we do have, but we have an amazing, uh, music program, and we also integrate the arts through, uh, the curriculum. And so, um, OCTAC has provided us with, um, a teacher who comes in and teaches animation, and you'll see a little bit of the work in the video, um, and film, because we have a film class on campus. So that has been amazing, um, and some of our students that are in special education, they have to take an extra period of reading, and they don't get an art class, because they have a double period of English. And so having someone come in and do extra art activities allows those students who wouldn't normally have an elective get that exposure to the arts, which is also a requirement of being a turnaround arts school, is you have to have a certain percentage of your population have the, uh, exposure to the arts. So also, I run a dance, um, team, and we were able to get funded, um, through OCDE, uh, to have our students go on a retreat, so have like a real experiential, um, mountain retreat, where we took, uh, 20 students, um, and they had, we had two dance teachers accompanying us, and they got to work on skills, and you'll see a little bit of that also in the video. OCTAC, um, has provided a dance teacher for that program. She comes every Wednesday, um, she does choreography, she's just an amazing, not, the thing I love about OCTAC is they don't just send us employees, they send us people with passion and desire to work in the community. And so, this teacher, um, did a dance last year for my group, and we actually flew the students to Washington DC to attend, um, a talent show through turnaround arts at the Kennedy Center. So, just an amazing, uh, resource for our students. So we're gonna show you a video that kind of highlights the retreat that, um, that we went on, and also, um, some of the other services that OCTAC provides, which is also tutoring, and then our, um, animation teacher.
I'm looking forward to, um, I'm looking forward to all the dances we get to experience, all the fun memories we get to make, and most importantly, that bond we get to make as a team.
Back, front, let me see my first line in, it can't stop.
So I know that we're short with time, and I just wanted to, um, give a general overview of OCTAC's partnership with Willard. We are providing counseling, parenting, tutoring, and after-school enrichment as well.
Mrs. Natalie, uh, helps me a lot with my math homework, she helped me get my grades up. Thank you very much, Mrs. Natalie.
These are two young ladies from the Willard neighborhood, um, they don't, um, go to Willard Middle School, but we, um, started getting other families from the neighborhood at Willard, and we started taking them in also as part of our... So as our commitment to provide services to this entire neighborhood, we are also providing scholarships to any other Willard family in, in, in this neighborhood. But we are prioritizing on the middle school students here at Willard.
With LinkedIn Pro Finder, I'm able to find a graphic designer. What's really comforting is that they've been vetted.
Thank you. So as you can see, this, uh, which I wanted to elaborate a little bit more, is this is an integration model. It's an inter, crime prevention and intervention, because we know that youth will be attracted to the arts, and when they, when we bring them in through the arts, then we can offer the other, uh, services that they so desperately need. So it's an integ, it's an integrative model, and as you know, sometimes, you know, youth are stubborn, and they wanted to do things their own way. So that's the way to bring them in, into some of the counseling and mental health programs that they need.
Thank you, we're gonna go ahead and begin with questions. Vice Chair Santana?
Thank you, uh, Chair. Uh, Ms. Jimenez, we had the pleasure last year visiting your site, it's a good site.
Thank you.
I always like it when, uh, the schools become a centralized location to get mental health, the arts.
Thank you.
And beyond, and we were privileged to see the performance at Willard Intermediate, which is, thank you for that.
Great.
I had it, the thought, it just escaped me right now, uh, if you can come back to me, that'd be great.
Of course, um, Commissioner Vasquez?
Uh, I don't think I have a question as such, but, um, I do like the idea of a, of an integration, integrated model for the arts, and it is a way to bring the kids.
That's right, thank you, yes.
Thank you, Commissioner Tardif?
Thank you for your presentation, I don't have any questions.
Thank you.
Commissioner Frazier?
Thank you for your presentation, I was curious, you're, you're looking to service 200 individuals?
Yes.
For $75,000?
That's right.
And you, uh, service 45 of the 125 individuals that you were requesting last year for a lower amount of money. What I guess I'm concerned about when you're bringing in the mental health component of it, what is the, the therapist-child ratio? How many, how much of that is each staff?
So it depends if it's one-on-one or group, but can I address the numbers first to clarify something very important? The numbers that we report to the CDBG are not the actual numbers of participants that we serve. We serve a lot more families, a lot more individuals, we just don't report all the families that we serve for different reasons. For example, for counseling, because of confidential reasons, we can't report some of that data. But, the other, like, enrichment classes, it's a little bit difficult to get the family sometimes, uh, from the school to return some of the income verification forms, and so the demographic data that we need to report, we don't report, but we are definitely serving a lot more students than what we are reporting.
And I think, to, thank you for that explanation, I think, too, to the question that asked earlier, uh, another individual, was that HUD wants to...
Sure.
And they're not really specific about why we're, why you're not able to, to show that.
Right.
So that's what we have to make our decision on.
Yeah.
But I, I guess I would, uh, also, I was curious, what is the average attendance for the group participation, for the groups, for the children?
It depends on what type of groups, for example, when it's a private, and I want, you know, you guys can also chime in, but when it's an arts enrichment class, it can be a little bit larger. Like the dance classes, it could be 20, 30, you know, it doesn't matter how big, as long as, uh, the kids, you know, are working together with, within their levels. When it's a more of a therapeutic art class, then of course it's a lot smaller, because now we're dealing with either special needs students or, uh, kids that may have a disability, so we try to keep it small, not more than six, seven kids per group. When it's, uh, the counseling, that, that is usually one-on-one with either the youth or the parent, and then we also, uh, we've also done in the past some parenting classes, and so again, it depends on how many parents come and participate. So it depends whether it's more of a prevention or intervention, because the intervention is a little bit more therapeutic in, uh...
So you have intervention groups?
Yes.
And I guess back to my original question.
And she can, can, can the school counselors chime in a little bit?
Just really quickly, so, um, we also had, where the dance teacher not only worked with my 40 students that are in a club, she came in and taught dance to PE classes, so you're talking about 30, 40, 45 students in six periods. So they're also affecting those larger amounts of kids, but, you know, coming into the classroom. And also, the animation teacher works with three periods of 35 kids each, does that, is that the type of...
That does, they're not mental health, are they?
Oh, you're just talking about mental...
Yeah. If it's, if, yeah, if it's mental health, it's definitely like smaller groups or a family, a family unit.
So to that degree, how many people on campus are...
20.
20 on each case load.
20 on each caseload, yes, 20 on each caseload.
And I, I just want to add to that, that we, like, we have a system at our school where we, we have a cost team that meets, and we discuss high-risk kids and needs, and we try to, you know, get them the appropriate services that they need. I know that, um, every year, we run into issues where we have a waitlist, because we don't have enough counseling services, and by bringing them in and having a partnership with them, and we have some other partners... and we have some other partnerships that have done the same thing, we've been able to get to the point where we don't have this long waiting list. We usually can call on our partners and say, "Look, we've got more kids and we don't have enough spaces for them." Because the therapists have a certain threshold of how many cases they can take at a time. Because many of these kids, it takes months to work with them. It's not like, you know, they see them once and get everything solved.
And just so I understand, so the one license factor that you have on staff is that you're overseeing all 40 of the club participants? Or more?
No, the 40 participants are the dance students, not the therapists. The therapist has a caseload of 20.
Just 20 for that one?
20. Plus the groups. Yeah, we bring more. And we have brought in through our partnerships in the community, we have brought in like two other partners, like Cal State Fullerton and Omid is a mental health clinic. And they also bring, you know, interns with them. So, we have built that partnership with them. And also, we have a partnership with Olive Crest through our Family and Resource Centers. So, we brought them into Willard. And so, they take some more. But again, this is not taking money away from the grant. We're pretty much funding Okta program staff. And then, the community partners are just coming in to support our efforts. Yeah.
Thank you. Commissioner Perez?
Thank you very much. I personally believe our Willard community is one of the most underserved, underutilized programs. I have a question for staff. As commissioners, we're being asked to give funds or recommendations. We just had a partner that we threw an audit, changed them from an LMC to an LMA. We're hearing partners that are saying they're meeting their numbers. However, because of the requirements from HUD, they're not meeting the numbers of the grant. It's a conundrum in my situation where I'm looking at the last two years of this organization not meeting the HUD certification numbers. However, I clearly know this organization and know the services that they're doing and know that they're reaching far beyond the numbers that we're serving. The last organization through the audit was able to be switched from an LMC to an LMA. Those are just technical stuff. So, I guess my question is twofold. Number one, either we hold everyone accountable for the same structure or we give them a category. Under LMA, how many can you reach here? Under LMC, how many can you reach? Because I don't think it's a fair process for both, for me to grade them when the last years, under the HUD, LMC, they didn't reach their numbers.
So, in order for an organization to either be certified as an LMA or an LMC, they have to meet certain HUD criteria. Most of the nonprofits that you're going to see today and from last Tuesday, they all qualify under LMC clientele. Because they service a limited amount of, or a very specific type of group of people. Whether, versus the LMA, services a large area. So, that's the difference. So, what we do is we have to look at the program that's being proposed. And then, that's how staff determines whether it's an LMC or an LMA.
Can I also elaborate on the numbers, if I may?
Actually, to be honest with you, I understand the numbers. But I guess my question, we've allowed other organizations to come back to us.
Okay.
Then my argument would be if they reduce their numbers, then they would be in compliance if they reached those numbers, correct?
Correct. You technically, yes. I don't know if that's something that they.
Well, no, no. And the reason I ask the question is, do you see our situation and our issue is, you know, when we look at, you know, this year, you're at 36%. Last year, you only hit 62%.
I don't know where the numbers are coming because I have a different report. And I mean, I'm confused about those numbers, honestly. And that's what I wanted to clarify. For example, we, I know for sure we're reaching our goal this year because that was one of the loopholes we had in year one with Willard, trying to figure out how to get back the forms, you know, the reporting data from the families. But now, we have talked about different ways how to collect that. And so, we're in that process right now. So, I know for sure we're going to meet our numbers as far as the reporting. Because we serve the numbers that we stated in the grant. It's just some of the forms are not returned.
And I understand that. So, we're going off of the actual reports that you provided us during the quarterly reports. But I understand sometimes the family might not give you a number. You serve the child. You provided the mental health therapy and the services, but you didn't get the follow-up from the parents for us to you, for you to put it on this sheet.
Correct.
So, we're looking at two different things.
Yes.
So.
Yes, yes.
Well, I don't have any other questions. Amy, your team, the center, you do an unbelievable job. Thank you for speaking.
Thank you. Thank you very much. I, yeah, I just don't want you to think that we're not meeting the numbers. We are. And we are making sure this year that all the documentation is provided to the city so that you can see that we are serving the families and a lot more. So, I don't want you to think that we're not meeting the numbers. We are. We're actually doing a lot more than we targeted. But also, I want you to be aware that we did receive a lot less funding this year. So, it makes it harder when you submit a proposal for $75,000 and then you get $59,000, right? So, then it becomes a little bit more challenging. But still, we are definitely, you know, servicing a lot more families than it appears, according, as you said, Commissioner Perez.
The issue, though, is when it's a federal application and you're turning to federal, you know, like I said, and my suggestion would be to reduce your number to those, the families that you think you could reach.
Okay. Or, which is what we're doing now, finding a different way to get the forms back from the families. That's what we're doing. And hopefully, that is already working for us. So, we should be okay at the end of this year.
And I'm not recommending you serve less students. But I have a list of what each agency gets and how much they serve.
Sure.
Some serve a lot more, some serve a lot less. But it's just, again, because of the federal regulations.
Sure.
That's what's popping up.
Of course.
So, thank you.
I understand. And we're, I've been hunting them too, trust me. Like, we need those forms. So, yeah, thank you very much. And thank you for the opportunity to present and to share our program with all of you.
Thank you, Commissioner Perez. I have just a few comments and questions. And then, I think Vice Chair Santana had some additional comments and questions. I just want to thank you first for what you're doing. I am a product of the Willard neighborhood. I went to Willard Intermediate. My nephew's going there now. So, very happy that you're serving the neighborhood. It is very underserved. It is one of the densest in the city. There's just a lot of issues there. So, thank you for what you're doing.
Thank you.
And just to follow up on Commissioner Perez's question specifically about, specifically in regards to the amount that you're requesting. So, I do see that you are requesting $75,000.
Yes.
Your minimum request is for $70,000. So, we take all of the requests very seriously. And as we're then allocating funds, sometimes we are not able to meet those numbers. So, if we weren't able to meet your $70,000 minimum request for funding, would you still be able to run this program? So, I know you've been operating with $59,000. So, I just want to have an idea of what would be feasible?
Sure.
And what wouldn't be feasible?
Of course, we can continue to run this program. And of course, it would be better to have some funding than none. And we would just try to figure out where we could modify the proposal.
Okay.
Yes, sure.
Vice Chair Santana?
I'll make it very quick because I think all the commissioners here up here agree that Willard is a neighborhood that requires much more care and focus. When I'm thinking about, is it wraparound service right with the student and the parent? How much of the parent counseling? Is there any data or numbers on parents who are inclined to speak to your counselor? Or just solely focus on student? Or can you just briefly talk about your counseling services?
You want to? And I want to finish with something else.
Olive Crest onsite will see only the student. But through their program, that therapist does connect with families. And those parents are able to get services at the Olive Crest site, which is, you know, a little bit at the Corbin Center. So, they can go to the Corbin Center and get family therapy or parents can get individual.
So, they're deferred?
I'm sorry?
They're deferred to another site?
It's true. But because they have the link at Willard, that therapist is seeing their child at Willard. You know, but it does create, you know, more of a hardship for them to get to another site. It's better when it's at Willard. So, yeah, it would be better if we had, you know, more for parents in terms of, we have a lot of issues with parents and students and they need therapy together. So, it is a little bit restrictive when they can only see the child.
And so, just to be very clear, I think we ran into some of our applicants who've made a little mistakes on their application. And I don't know if city staff has been able to reach out to you, either phone or via email. But there is still an opportunity for you to correct and rectify your application. So, when we get the correct version, we can make a better assessment or vote when it comes to funding. Are you aware of that? Rather than waiting until next year, you can make an adjustment on your application.
Are you asking me if I'm aware of?
Yes.
The modifications?
Correct. Did you receive an email or a phone call from city staff?
Commissioner Sotek, can I just?
Sure.
Specifically, are you asking them to modify their application now?
From an LMC to LMA?
No, that's not up for discussion.
Interesting.
That's not up for.
I, isn't, I mean, so, let's clarify that because I think.
That was the question I had. And I think, I think the issue, so my recommendation was to reduce the number so then they would meet it, even though we know they're going higher. So, but I think the staff let us know as far as changing it, they couldn't change it from an LMC to the LMA because of the specific requirement. However, if you felt that you weren't going to reach your 125 of the 145 this year and you wanted to come back with a new proposal, you're literally going to have 24 hours. I think that's what we agreed on, was come back within 24 hours.
City staff say no, so I would like.
The applications were already submitted. The proposals are already set. What, the way that, the procedure, the process is that after all of you have completed the evaluations and you made your determination of who you're going to fund and what the amount, we will reach out to every single nonprofit that applied. And we will negotiate with them on a reduced rate, whatever your recommendations were and whatever the city council approved. And we will negotiate with them to increase or decrease their performance deficit. We did that last year. And we will continue to do so. But in regards to.
I've got a question.
Many modifications to the applications. The applications have already been turned in. So, they could make corrections if something's.
I'm going to allow our fellow commissioners to open up. It's just what I have to make. Maybe they can expand and hopefully get better understanding of this. Chairwoman, floor is yours.
Commissioner Frazier, I see your hand.
And that's what I wanted to clarify too. Because from what I understood from the last meeting that we were here, was that two emails were going to be sent out to the people who were applying for grants. So, one email was going to go out to the people that we spoke to on Tuesday, letting them know that they have to 5:00 on Wednesday to submit any corrections or updates to their application. And then, everybody that we received today would be notified that by 5:00 tomorrow, they have the same option. I think that's kind of what we're speaking to. Because this would be a correction if they so decided to lower that number. Would it not?
I just want to quickly jump on that. I also do remember stating that we, as a commission, or at least myself as the chair, was only comfortable with applications being amended when it was external documents that maybe there were minor corrections to be made on, but not altering their proposal as a whole. And I think this, what we're communicating now, if we were to allow this applicant to change their number, is not the same that was communicated on Tuesday. So, I don't think that, I wouldn't feel comfortable with that. I think that's a very different type of amendment to their application as opposed to just submitting a correct budget because they mistakenly budgeted for a two-year grant as opposed to a one-year grant. And I'll take any other commission comments or.
No, no, I actually agree with you 100%. So, I just don't like the fact that last year mid-year, we switched someone from an LME to LMC. And when you talk about fairness, I'm not going to grade this applicant as not meeting their numbers because the other applicant didn't meet their numbers, but they just got switched to an LMC to an LMA. So, I think with all due respect, there's going to be, I know I'm going to have a big issue this year. We can't change it. Process has gone through. But for next year, when we look at this grant process, I think we need to be able to say, these are the numbers. This is how we're going to look at it. And I applauded Santana last time talking about, we need to have some workshops that kind of address these issues. Because as people are coming in front of us, we're looking at numbers different than they're looking at numbers. So, but I agree with you 100%.
Thank you. And I just want to remind commissioners that as commissioners, we have the discretion to rank these applicants as we see fit. So, we have what we see on paper. But we also have the information that's presented us during these presentations. So, we can rank at our discretion.
Thank you, Chair. And I don't want this to, you to feel like you're on the hot seat. It's between the commission and the city staff just to gain more clarity, information. And I think as a commission, you know, we need to continue bringing up and making sure the city delivers on what the commission is asking. If not, then let us know ahead of time. Because we don't want to be put in this position where we're trying to decide and we have an applicant in front of us trying to figure out what's going on. So, just for future notes, maybe we should meet beforehand and discuss. So, when we continue this process, it doesn't look so sloppy. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for your presentation.
Sure. Thank you. Thank you, everyone. Bye-bye.
I would now like to invite our next speaker forward to present their proposal. That's going to be the Public Law Center for their Community Development Housing Program proposal.
And we're also validating.
Yes. Okay, what do I use to click? Okay. Okay, wonderful. Thank you.
You may begin whenever you're ready.
Okay, thank you. Good afternoon. My name is Ugochi Annabara Nicholson. I'm the directing attorney of the Housing and Homelessness Prevention Unit at Public Law Center. We're located here in Santa Ana. We were founded in 1981 as a 501(c)(3) nonprofit. We provide free legal services to low-income residents throughout Orange County. We're known as Orange County's pro bono law firm because we are able to serve a wide variety of individuals, including individuals with undocumented status without restriction, veterans, minorities, seniors, and children. We provide counseling services, individual representation, community advocacy to groups, strategic policy advocacy to make sure that jurisdictions are doing their fair share to ensure affordable, safe, and decent housing for low-income residents in Orange County. And we also engage in impact litigation to challenge societal injustices such as nimbyism, lack of affordable housing, and lack of political will to develop affordable housing. In our housing unit, we engaged in what's called a strategic planning session to really drill down to identify what we want for individuals in the city of Santa Ana and want to pursue on their behalf in court and in other arenas, as mentioned before. And so, our vision in the housing unit is very simple. We fight for safe, dignified, secure, and affordable housing for all in the city of Santa Ana and in Orange County generally. And to achieve this vision, we work hard and tirelessly to prevent homelessness, preserve and expand affordable housing opportunities, protect housing rights. And through these efforts, we hope to empower our communities. In our housing unit, we provide a wide variety of services that range from advising and counseling an individual who just wants to understand what their rights are. If a landlord wants to increase the rent, what does the landlord have to do to do that? If they. If they are tired of trapping their third rat in their house, what does the landlord need to do to provide secure housing? So it might just be simple as advising and counseling the individual to take steps to rectify the situation that's causing problems with their housing. We provide brief services to individuals who are faced with housing instability or loss of their housing due to eviction. We represent tenants in eviction cases. And as previously stated, we do impact litigation cases, working on affordable housing credit creation and preservation of safe and dignified affordable housing. And we also engage in legislative and policy advocacy to fight for policies that will ensure that individuals have access to safe and affordable housing in Orange County. If funded with, if continued to be funded with CDBG, we would be able to continue our outreach activities to reach out to individuals in need of affordable housing opportunities and to preserve their housing if they're at risk of losing the housing due to eviction or some other mechanism to dis, of displacement. We would be able to leverage our resources that we have with our other units, such as our health unit, our veterans unit, uh, my colleague from our community organizations, Legal Assistance Project, to provide legal services that will help reduce Santa Ana's need for emergency services and law enforcement expenditures associated with housing instability and homelessness. We would also be able to continue to provide services to the community for those individuals in need of advocacy to prevent the loss of their housing due to illegal retaliatory evictions, breaches of the warranty of habitability, or retaliatory eviction for just asserting their rights. And finally, we, as I stated before, are able to serve undocumented individuals without restriction, meaning that we do not have to find a special exception to provide services to them. And so we are finding that there are a number of tenants who are being targeted for no other reason than the fact that they lack status in the United States of America. And so with CDBG funds, we have defended evictions that have come as the result of an individual being threatened for reporting their landlord to provide dignified and safe housing to them and threatening them with reporting them to ICE or other immigration officials. And so that work will continue if we are able to be funded with CDBG so that we can help stabilize families and prevent homelessness in the community. And with that, I'm concluding and I'll be available for questions. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll begin questions on my right this time. Commissioner Fittis?
Great job. Great grat. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Frasier?
I want to just, um, kind of, so the two years that the municipal housing section was funded, you guys serviced about 40 people with less than $4,000. You're asking for $50,000. What changed the program? Are you anticipating a better additional $10,000 that you, you've shown thus far is not absolutely necessary?
With the additional, thank you for your question. Uh, with the additional funding, we are hoping to provide additional staffing and resources. We are finding that due to the economy, um, due to the attack on low-income people from the federal administration, um, that individuals are coming to our offices with higher level of needs. And so this additional funding will help us marshal and put forth additional resources so that we can defend evictions and possibly look at other avenues to, um, house individuals. So we would be using the money towards staffing and continued outreach.
Thank you. And also, what is, do you, do you happen to know your, your ratio of, of citizens to undocumented that you service with CDBG funds?
Um, in, in Santa Ana, we have a large population as I, that is without status. And so the other nonprofit in the area, uh, Community Legal Aid, SOCal, they are only able to provide services, um, to individuals, um, who are undocumented with, and they have restrictions. So it's about a 50-50 split in our housing unit right now.
50% of what you're doing is for undocumented, you're trying to...
Yes.
Thank you. Commissioner Tardif?
No questions.
Thank you. Commissioner Vasquez?
No questions.
Thank you, Vice Chair Santana.
More comments than questions, but, uh, thank you for the work you do. I think it's very important to preserve the dignity of living in a safe, clean environment. I understand that some landlords are very retaliatory against their tenants in regards to their status. Um, and my question to you is, what outreach have you or the PLC worked on to, to make the community aware of the services and programs you offer, or more of the services you offer?
Um, we conduct, um, Know Your Rights presentations. We also staff a couple clinics in Orange County. Um, one is at a local homeless shelter in the city of Anaheim, as well as a community outreach center in the city of Costa Mesa. And we also are very, we're partners, partners with the court. We have several court-based services, um, through court-based clinics. And we have very good rapport with court staff. And that's how our information gets out, as well as local agencies within the city of Santa Ana. Uh, for example, the Housing Authority for the city of Santa Ana, they make, they make referrals. They cross-refer cases to us as well.
Thank you for that. Thank you for the work you're doing. Nothing further.
Thank you. Uh, and I just very similarly also want to say thank you. I'm very familiar with the Public Law Center's, uh, program. I've personally referred a lot of people there. And I just really want to highlight the numbers. So I know with your last CDBG grant award, you stated that you were planning to serve 45 people. Um, in the last five months, you've already served 36 people. That's about an average of seven a month. So if you keep up with those numbers, you're going to serve an additional 49 in the next seven months. And I just, I really want to highlight that because I think it's, it's a real testament to the need for legal services specifically for undocumented tenants. And the Public Law Center is the only place where undocumented tenants can currently go to receive free legal assistance. And this is just an issue that's really important to me because I, I do housing work. I work directly with tenants. And I receive a lot of phone calls of people that have been defrauded, that have paid, um, fake attorneys $2,000, $3,000 to defend them in court, only to lose their money and then lose their housing as well. So just thank you for what you're doing and I'm happy that you've applied again this year.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Oh, we walked. Thank you very much, though.
And then I would like to call our next speaker, the Public Law Center as well, for their consumer program.
Um, thank you very much. My name is Sarah Ethemew and I'm the directing attorney of Public Law Center's Community Organizations Legal Assistance Project. And I'm here today to present our proposal for community economic development. So I'm here on behalf of both our consumer unit and our community organizations, Legal Assistance Project, which I'll shorten to COLAP to make it a bit easier. So with the priority, the priority area that we are intending to meet with CDBG funds is the community economic development priority of the city of Santa Ana. So we intend to meet this priority through the economic empowerment of individual residents and families currently residing in Santa Ana. So two parts within Public Law Center. Um, we have our COLAP unit, which I run, um, and we represent our nonprofit organizations and small business owners, and our consumer law unit, which represents individuals who are in need of legal services relating to their personal financial situations, um, including consumer debt, student loans, identity theft, and financial literacy. So in the course of preparing our proposal, we identified, um, two different areas of need within the city of Santa Ana. The first was the need for good quality, free transactional legal services for small businesses. So a healthy small business community is really the engine for economic growth within any community. So, and what we found is that small business ownership in itself is a, is a key contributor to individual and family economic success, particularly with, um, with families whose economic situation means that they might have faced barriers to formal education, which is a, which is a requirement of many well-paying jobs or medium-paying jobs, jobs where they can actually support themselves and their families. So for many, um, so for many families in low-income communities, starting out as a small business owner is a natural first step into improving their economic situation. And what we found, um, this is true both nationally and within the city of Santa Ana itself. There is not enough good quality, free legal assistance available to small business owners and those who intend to, um, to uncover this type of, this type of work. The second need we identified is the need for financial literacy. So nobody is immune from predatory financial practices. But what we found is particularly the elderly, um, low in, very low-income individuals, the disabled, the undocumented are particularly at risk of economic exploitation. So looking at the elderly, um, population in particular, unlike younger, um, younger workers, younger families who are, they're faced into the particular, um, economic tragedy, they at least have the rest of their working careers to try to bring themselves back into good financial health. With the elderly, who are many, in most cases, living on, um, a fixed income, that's not the case. And unfortunately, we even see our elderly population sometimes losing their home, losing their homes, whether they own or rent, and finding themselves on the street. So we find that good, um, financial literacy and good support, legal support is absolutely critical for this population. So we, um, we're calling, we're naming our proposal a cradle to retirement form of legal services. And the point is to spur economic growth in Santa Ana. So not only to help, not only to help the, um, individuals increase their, their own financial situation to improve that, but also to improve the tax base and increase the tax base of the city of Santa Ana, increase employment, um, increase overall economic growth. So what we're focusing on, if I start on the cradle, start on the cradle end first, is we're focusing on an entry-level type of small business, which is childcare providers, particularly in-home childcare providers. These are individuals who may not have the money to invest in, um, have enough capital to invest in a brick-and-mortar childcare, um, center or might not be able to open a new shop for, to run their small business. So it's something they can run out of their own home. They can use the skills that they have and their own personality and their love for children. So that is on the, that side of things. Um, going for, what we've also decided to add in this proposal, which we didn't have in our, in our former, last year's proposal, is another area of entry-level, um, entry-level industry and for small businesses is food entrepreneurship. So there has been, um, a recent law passed that now allows micro-enterprise food kitchens. So like childcare, this is a business that someone can start up in their own home without the capital expenditure necessary. So there had always been, um, a certain amount of home cooking allowed, um, businesses being set up, but prior to this new law, that was very restricted. So we're anticipating this is going to be a tremendous area of growth for Santa Ana residents. And we want to be there on the legal side to help them get started and on the right foot. And once they get started, to maintain their business and eventually to, to grow out of their homes and have actual, um, either have a, work in a commercial kitchen or perhaps even to have their own food truck or restaurant. So that, that is our goal. And finally, um, the cradle to retirement, we also have our focus on the elderly population, ensuring they, they have the financial education and literacy to keep themselves in a good financial health, healthy situation and to make sure that they can retain the income that they've worked so hard to, to collect and to maintain for their retirement. So how we intend to do this, um, we can, we intend to continue to use CDBG funds for community education. We want, we believe that education is very important for, um, on the legal side for the community to, especially business owners, to really, um, feel that they are equipped with the knowledge that which, that they can run their business effectively. Um, also for the, for the elderly population, and really, you know, we're not just limited to elderly population, but anyone who needs it, financial literacy in order to, um, so, so folks, um, residents in Santa Ana have that good education and understand how they can protect their income. Um, legal representation as needed. We are available to represent clients, um, whether it's in court, in bankruptcy, to, um, to represent a client against a predatory lender. For example, recently, we helped a, an elderly client that had been signed a contract. He did not speak English, but he was forced to sign a, a contract, well, not forced, but he, it was presented with a, with a contract that was in English. He didn't understand it. It was for solar panels on his roof. He was on the hook for basically $20,000, which he did not have. We were able to, we were able to represent, um, the client, which resulted in over $20,000 savings to him. And finally, um, on resource support, we not only represent small businesses in, within COLAP, but we also represent nonprofit organizations. And we understand that there are many organizations in Santa Ana, wonderful groups, who are providing a lot of support for our residents. And it's our intention to make sure that those nonprofit organizations have their legal support as well. Because if they are not healthy, then they're not able to serve their clients as well as they can. So it's our intention to work with, including many of the nonprofits that you're going to be funding with CDBG grants, to, um, to make sure that they are, they are legally supported as well. So whether it's through compliance, tax compliance, helping with contracts, employment, anything that they need, we are there for them. And finally, I've just have my contact information there, but I will open up for questions. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll begin on my left with Vice Chair Santana.
Thank you, Chairwoman Ramos. You know, I'm very excited that, uh, you're working on the cottage food bill, correct?
Cottage food bill and micro-enterprise home kitchen bill.
And so it decriminalizes, uh, the activity of selling and, and we have really fantastic cooks here in, in Santa Ana with rich traditional foods. And I know it's a lot of hurdles to jump over to legitimize the business, to get your business license, to go through the process. I commend you for the great work you're doing. I know it's, uh, something that a lot of folks are excited about. Um, question I had was, how much do you charge those small businesses for? I know, is it a fee that you charge or is it, can you give me a little bit more information about that?
Sure. We just, as all of our services at Public Law Center, we do not charge a penny to our clients for their legal services. All a client would be responsible for would be the business license fee and any other startup costs that they would incur if they were doing it on their own. So nothing, as far as legal fees.
Have you put together like a workshop, a training or something here in Santa?
Yes. So we have held, um, a number of child, of startup childcare trainings and workshops. So basically, we go through the licensing requirements. We go through, um, basic business law issues, so what kind of entity somebody might choose, risk mitigation, that kind of thing. So we anticipate that we would follow that same model for the food entrepreneurs.
Thank you. And thank you for also focusing on the elders. I know sometimes it gets, they get overlooked very easily, but it's important that, uh, we have a great resource here in the city of Santa Ana. Nothing further.
Thank you. Commissioner Vasquez?
I do have one question as far as this, uh, resource support. Does this support include, um, such technical resources as are used in ECOMs?
As? I didn't catch...
Well, for example, a lot of, uh, online businesses, you know, there's a big, um, presence. Uh, so I'm wondering, because I myself look for them because of my website, et cetera, et cetera, and training, but sometimes the things can get on the code level. I spent the other day, maybe four days trying to figure something out and this was only in HTML. And still I, I had to, I had to seek, uh, somebody that was more expert in it.
Yes. So certainly on, on the legal side, um, we, we handle... Yes, so certainly, on the legal side, we handle, I would say almost anything that could come up in the course of a nonprofit's lifetime. So, whether it's getting a nonprofit started from idea to corporation and applying, and working with IRS, all the way through if they need to dissolve. So, within that context, we do have technology issues that come up, privacy, and so, and so forth. So, potentially, that's something that we would, you know, that we would handle.
This occurred to me, would that also include like grant writing?
No. So, I wish, I think, I think with most of my nonprofit clients, if only they could find a free grant writer, they would be very happy, but, no, not there.
Okay, thank you.
But we help with reviewing grants, you know, the MOUs that come out of grants.
Oh, okay, you do review.
Mm-hmm.
That's very valuable.
Thank you. Commissioner Tardif?
No questions, thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Frazier?
Thank you for your presentation. I'm curious, what is your outreach for this program to low-income families? What are some of your outreach processes?
Okay, thank you for asking that, because that reminded me, I noticed that question had come up when my colleague did her presentation, and how do we get to our services out to our clients? And that, that's always a challenge. You know, not everyone thinks lawyer in the first place. But I think our, through our community workshops, our clinics, that is one method that we do it, also our unique partnerships that we have with our other community-based organizations. So, I think the fact that through COLAP, we are able to be the lawyer for nonprofits, nonprofits within Santa Ana know about us.
And what are some of your most notable partners for, particularly to increase client participation in the program?
Okay, I would say, now, I'm speaking on the small business side. Delhi Center is a key partner of ours. We are involved in the Santa Ana Early Learning Initiative. We're not funded under that program, but we are a partner in it. Also, the local SBDC within Santa Ana, we rely on for both our referring clients, getting client referrals, and as a workshop partner.
Now, does that include turning individuals into small business owners? Because I know small businesses are made up of people, so are these outreach efforts including targeting lower-income individuals that possibly might have a high-risk business plan?
Yes, absolutely. So, we're both, we work both with people who just have the idea, so the entry-level entrepreneur, as well as individuals, families, or existing corporations even, that are employing low-income residents in Santa Ana. So, we try, we try to reach the whole arena in the small business community.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Commissioner Perez?
Yes, thank you for your presentation. What's been the most difficult part about administering your current CDBG funding?
You know, it is a, this is a new, this was a new project, so we're entering our, you know, our proposal now is, would be for our second year. So, with any new project, getting ramped up, there's always a challenge there, and getting, letting the community know that we're there and what our services are. So, we do anticipate, if we are funded for a second year, we'll be able to hit the ground running and really be able to start delivering services right away without having to do the community engagement that we needed to do for the first part of the current grant.
Are you familiar with what your numbers are currently right now for your program?
Yes.
Okay. Anything you want to add to that?
You know, I would say, you know, again, the ramp up was, we are a little bit behind where we want to be at the mo, you know, where we anticipate being at the moment, but we have no, we're very confident that we're going to be able to meet and even exceed, hopefully, our numbers. We're now entering, we feel like we've let the community know that we're out there, we've done the community education, which we're going to continue doing, but we're ready at this point to start seeing more individual clients and increasing those numbers.
Excellent, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Perez. I don't have any questions, just thank you for the work that you're doing.
Thank you.
And with that, I'd like to ask the commissioners if you would like to take a five to 10-minute break, we're halfway through right now, I think it would be a good time. Okay, I'm calling a break.
Dave Richard.
Thank you, Vice Chair Santana. I would now like to invite our next speaker to present their proposal, is Pure Game Here for Star Sports.
Well, thank you very much for letting me present today. So, we're talking about a year-round sports program for kids. The idea is, first off, why do kids play sports? If you look at the research out there, kids play sports because of fun. That's the number-one reason kids are out there playing sports. Unfortunately, what we found in our work, Pure Game has now been in existence for 10 years, what we found is kids have a real hard time today with believing in themselves. And so, because they don't believe in themselves, they don't typically step out and do something new or try something new. So, they stay kind of cocooned in their traditional way of thinking and doing what they're doing. Well, if we can actually get them out of that way of thinking and get them into a fun environment where they feel like they belong, then we can actually have a program that teaches character education and leadership coaching and life skills through sport. So, nothing that Pure Game does is traditional. We don't, we don't coach, we don't teach, there's no skills and drills, and there's no teams and leagues. And there are many organizations out there that focus on that model. And ultimately, there's nothing wrong with it, but if we know that kids play sport because of fun, and they don't necessarily believe in themselves sufficiently, so they don't try new stuff, getting kids into an environment that's high-pressured and on top of that high cost, you get a lot of kids not playing and not getting involved. And so, they go home, they're sedentary, or even worse, they're looking for somewhere else to belong, and that could be gangs or criminal activity. And so, and which is, again, prevalent in most of the neighborhoods that Pure Game serves. And so, the idea is creating a fun environment, getting somewhere positive where kids can belong, and then we teach them positive character traits like respect, responsibility, and we build their confidence. So, what we're really trying to do is teach them how they can believe in themselves. And our field champions, they're our staff, they make connections with the kids, and so making that connection with the kids will have kids come back to the program. Our idea is, we've now grown the program to serve 70 schools in and around Orange County. So, we've grown rapidly over the last two years. And what we, what we plan on doing with this program is having an after-school program. So, kids don't need to go home, they walk out of their classroom, and they come straight to the sports field with Pure Game. It's their place to belong, it's a fun place to come and play, and then they can learn life skills there. Couple of benefits there, obviously, they're not going home, so they don't have to go somewhere and come back. The parents get a free babysitting service for an extra hour, so daycare is taking care of them for a little while longer, so they're much more likely to have their kids participate in the program. And then, when we, when we do that through our partnership schools, we can actually extend that through the summer and spring break camps. These are the times when kids are really getting into trouble because they've got nothing to do. Well, we'll work with the city of Santa Ana, find some parks and rec spaces close to their neighborhoods, and have our field champions walk them to the park. Three of our field champions actually come from Townsend Street. It's watching, it's like watching the Pied Piper when they walk out of their house, because they walk down the street with a bag of soccer balls on their back, and kids follow them over to the park. So, it's really funny to watch that, but it's positive, it's safe, and kids are learning positive values as opposed to some of the negative stuff that can surround them. Like I said, we've got a lot of differences in our infrastructure and how we play, and that's what's really engaging for the kids, and that's why we're now in 70 schools, serving close to 7,000 kids a year, and that can only grow. We're only seeing the numbers of that increase. We could be at 100 schools tomorrow if we had the staff and the capabilities to do so. And so, we're growing, we're managing that growth well, and watching what we do and how we do it. The growth now is, the after-school program would be very much a community-based program, where we get kids of all ages, sizes, shapes, whatever it is, it doesn't matter if you've got two left feet, you can still come out and play this game of soccer. So, we're creating physical activity for the kids, they're actually able to enjoy themselves. We can then talk to them about being healthy, healthy eating options, physical activity, physical exercise, all of the lessons that they need to become good citizens within the community, we can actually teach them that within the program that we run. As I said, our field champions make these connections, so they can walk them down this pathway of going from elementary into middle school. Our curriculum changes ever so slightly there, we're looking at a social, social and emotional learning platform, where they're learning who they are on the inside. And then, we move them into high school, where we're actually looking then to do a life beyond school program. So, we're teaching them how to engage in work or college, life beyond school, right? What skills do you need? Part of our program is getting some of the high schools to come back into our middle school programs, where we actually engage some of our elementary schools' kids as well, so they actually do an after-school program, where high schoolers are actually given leadership roles to help run the programs. So, we think we're a self-sufficient service, where we can get kids to come through the program, keep them off the street, keep them entertained, keep them physically active, and teach them to be good, strong citizens at the time. There's the numbers of the people that we've served, so we're looking to grow this upcoming year, up to 10,000 to 12,000 kids through the program. And the reason we can do those numbers is, we're in, we serve about 120 to 200 kids per school, per school year, and that, that changes a lot, but we also partner with Boys and Girls Club, so we can run partnerships with them throughout the summer, Big Brother, Big Sister, there are a ton of other community service partners as well. And that's, that's it, thank you very much.
Thank you. I'll begin with commission questions on my left, Vice Chair Santana.
Thank you, Chairman Ramos. Thank you for your presentation, Sharon. I know that sports is an integral connection to a lot of our youth, especially those that, who are going through some things at home. A question for you, sir, is, do you charge a fee for students as far as like equipment?
No, no fee for the students. No fee for the students. Because we don't play stereotypical leagues and teams, and because there's none of that, you know, club or AYSO style, there is no equipment needed. We provide the soccer balls and the goals, we turn up and the kids come and play. It's truly about getting kids down to a park and kicking the ball around with their friends in an environment, so they turn up in their school uniform.
Beautiful. And how many sites are you currently in right now?
It's now 70 schools, 70 schools. In Santa Ana, about seven or eight, I believe. It's hard to keep track of the numbers in specific cities.
Seven, eight, great. And which, is it middle school, high school, elementary?
Elementary, middle, and high school.
All three?
Yeah.
Okay.
And we work in juvenile hall as well, so we're working some of the, some of the access schools, which are kids who have already gone down that path, so we're trying to create, you know, an intervention.
Your numbers speak for volume, and you're doing a great job, and again, it's good for us to, you know, get to know a bit more. This is your first year of funding for CDBG, correct?
Yeah.
Awesome. That's it for me, thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Vasquez?
Just curious about that you have no coaches or referees, so how do they know?
So, they're called field champions. Our staff, we have a staff, I have 12 staff members, and we call them field champion versus coaching, coaches, because we believe that they're there to champion the lives of the kids. And what, the program is set up, that we'll set up two fields next to each other, and then, small fields, small-sided, and kids just go out there and play. Our field champion then becomes just the adult supervisor, more or less, making sure that the kids are playing, they're engaged, and then we use that to create the experiential learning moments where we can teach them life lessons. So, there is always an adult there, we just call them field champions.
Now, my other question is, did your team sizes are smaller and therefore flexible, but how do you form like the core of a team?
So, there are no teams, effectively. We'll have 20, 30, 40 kids show up, and then we'll actually put them on fields and have them play a game of small pickup, and then every five minutes or so, we'll switch the teams around and have them play. Some schools, we're working with 140 kids at once, where we've got six field champions out there, and they'll look after a couple of fields each, and we just shuffle the teams around every couple of minutes. So, they're playing 5v5, or 6v6, or 7v7.
Any problems with somebody because they're the individual concept, so they're a team as far as being able to?
No, because we make it positive, because we keep it that positive environment, and kids are able to play, and because it's so fast-paced, because it's a smaller field, the kids who are really good soccer players love it because they're able to develop skills of their own. It's kind of, when I grew up in England, it was just like, let's go down to the park and kick the ball around, and if I saw you doing a skill, I'd want to replicate that. And so, it's much more freestyle play. And then, the kids who can't play, they're just encouraged to be out there and run around and do their best. And so, because of that, we get some of the better players, superstars, helping the not-so-good players, or the older ones, helping the younger ones. So, it truly is a community field where we, where we have kids playing for the fun of playing, and as the statistics prove, fun is the number-one reason anyone plays sport.
Okay. Thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you. Commissioner Tardif?
No questions, thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Frazier?
Thank you for your presentation. I'm a little curious, because I'm not 100% familiar with your organization, it looks like, how long has the, this particular program been around?
So, we've been around since 2009. We started partnering with schools in 2014, I believe, 13, 14, somewhere around about there. And then, we started with two, moved to three, four, and then we've just slowly grown from there.
Okay. And traditionally, I participated in sports growing up, and traditionally, it was to foster competition and to create those character-building experiences. And you said you've kind of devolved the teams and captains into, what are you calling them?
Field champions, yeah.
But they still essentially serve the same purpose?
Yeah, they're there to, they join in, they're positive advocates for play. And so, there is still competition in any of the, any of the programs we run, but it's not, it's not competition that's driven by adults, it's competition that's driven by the kids. So, those ones who are really competitive, get out there and play like they're playing in the World Cup. Those ones who are just there because their friend is there, turn up because their friend is there. And so, yeah.
Okay, and I guess to focus in on young men and boys, because we've kind of, statistically, we've kind of seen where their views and their education on masculinity has changed, and they're being told that their traditional values of masculinity are toxic. How do you, how does your program address that?
That's a great question. A lot of it is just creating an inclusive environment, where we're focused on the individual character, values of, and strengths of the person, right? And so, we accept people into it as they are, and what we're really looking for is common decency in behavior, and how do we teach them that, what respect means? And that respect, as a, as a young man, respect still can be, hey, I just knocked you over, but being respectful is still good enough for me to come and pick you up and make sure you're okay. So, it's more kind of common decency values and common sense kind of stuff that we work through. I wouldn't say that we really have any differences between male, female-type stuff, it's just how do we create really decent human beings?
And what is your, what is your program modeled after? What model do you guys take most of your program from, as far as engaging the student? Once they're, once they're into the program, engaging them to keep them interested, as well as, you said that it switches to kind of a learning experience, where you're looking at those life goals, what do you model your program after to ensure that that needle moves in a positive direction?
That's a great question. A lot of it is modeled after kind of just the free-play model, right? Just getting kids playing and being themselves. But if, if I was to say that we modeled it after anything, it would be kind of the John Wooden-type pyramid, that's where a lot of our stuff comes from, is that type of, that That's where a lot of our stuff comes from, is that type of, that value of showing up and being your best. In any situation, showing up and being your best.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Commissioner Perez?
Thank you very much. No questions. Thank you for your presentation.
Thank you. I also have no questions. Thank you for your presentation.
Thank you.
I would now like to call forward our next speaker to present their proposal. And that's going to be Santa Ana Extreme for their Santa Ana Extreme softball proposal.
Hi, my name is McKibbe Delarosa. I'm the president of Santa Ana Extreme. Thank you for taking the time to consider our proposal. I'm here to represent for a year-round softball program here in the city of Santa Ana. We currently have been here within the city of Santa Ana since, I believe, two thousand and three. We cater to young female athletes between the ages of nine to nineteen. With our primary focus and goal is of developing these players to potentially help them get to college and hopefully earn a college scholarship. We've, we usually take these girls right out of rec ball, recreational league from young ages, usually around ten, eleven, twelve, start to develop their skills. And hopefully develop them throughout the ages. Kind of one of the things we had to do is take them through their teenage years and help them grow into not just athletes, but young women. And hopefully give them the type of skills that they need to be successful as they go to college. The fortunate thing that we have here, serving in the city of Santa Ana, is Southern California itself as a whole is considered, you know, the capital of softball for student athletes that play collegially and throughout the Olympics. Since the inception that they accepted that program and actually being re-entered in two thousand and twenty. Within that, Orange County is considered probably the best group of girls and prospects for that tap ball level of play. Unfortunately, here in the city of Santa Ana, there's really very limited programs that they have for these type of players. There's players throughout Southern California, but it's usually catered to people with a higher financial means than currently with a lot of the families here. So our program has always strived to provide a high-level type of program to help low-income, definitely any type of player, players from the city of Santa Ana itself. As a lot of the parents here are first-time, second-generation residents to the United States itself. They don't know what's available to them or how to even proceed and help their develop, help their daughter get through that type of program. Their daughter definitely might have the skill set and capability to achieve it. But unfortunately, you know, their family atmosphere prevents, you know, potential player actually going to college on a scholarship. So that was a need that we saw way back. And we've, ever since then, we've tried to really focus our goals towards that. It serves a lot of different needs for us that we, that we value because we feel that, I mean, I could just speak personally, I'm the president. So I felt as me being the first person in my family to go to college, I really saw the value of what it did, not just for myself, but the family. I think it transforms the family to be more, I guess, successful. And a lot of times, the family is kind of undereducated. When you have somebody go through college, people within that family itself feel that they have the capability and means to do it themselves and will strive for it. So that's why we thought was kind of focused on that. Kind of some of the things that we've already, our program tried to offer these players, we definitely help with the recruiting process itself, preparation for college prep exams, SAT, ACTs. And one thing that probably a lot of people overlook, we try to help them with time management. So they're in college, they can hopefully be successful while they're there to manage their time, which is usually one of the things that people don't realize that they're going to be a problem when they are in college. The reason we're looking for this grant is we're understaffed. I mean, we're just a volunteer-based program. We're hoping to help, actually have some people come in to help us with the recruiting process, which is actually a very big burden on the limited resources that we have. And it's probably the biggest need for the group of players that we have and our program and the community as a whole. There is really nobody here that serves this, you know, this market, for lack of a better term. I've always felt and I've always stated this, that we kind of serve the biggest minority out there, and that's youth female athletes. There's no other sport out there that caters to specifically girls. Everything else is just an offshoot of what the boys are doing. Softball is a smaller field. It's made specifically for girls. And it doesn't matter the size. People out there that will have, the girls will have to be six foot tall to be successful. You know, some of the most successful college players are, you know, mid-five, you know, five-four, five-five, five-six. So especially in the city of Santa Ana, where some of the girls are smaller, it's definitely a sport that they can thrive in and be successful. So we're definitely looking for help in that area and that's one of the main reasons why we applied for the grant. Also, I'd like to add, one of the impacts that we currently do have with the city of Santa Ana is definitely where it could be demonstrated and shown is the high school level of softball. The players that come into our program are usually starters on varsity, the freshman year. Have a tendency to make, you know, all-league and help turn those high school programs around. I know in a lot of these grant things, it seems like sports maybe not be the biggest thing. But I think in our program, we, we kind of expand outside of the sports with, through our academics. To play at a high level, and if you have a, if you're trying to strive for college, you're definitely going to keep your grades up. That's one of the, one of the things that we have within our program as they get to high school. They definitely have to have grades. One, to make them academically eligible if they're to get to college. And just, it's just something we're striving for, to kind of hold all our players accountable, not just to be an athlete, to be a student athlete. Like I say, our current, our program has, as I said, we've been around fifteen, sixteen years. We definitely, at this point in time, we've already gotten, all the girls that graduate through our program, we've gotten them college scholarships throughout the, throughout the nation. We have girls that have gone off to Hawaii, Maryland, and all the states in between. So it's not like we're just trying to do this as something that we have done and we're just trying to ask for some support with our request. And I guess I'll wrap it up there. I think I'm almost out of time. So thank you.
Thank you. I'll begin with questions on my right. Commissioner Perez?
Yes, I just want to applaud you for coming up here. Female sports, I think it's a huge underserved population. We have a lot of programs that come here, we talk about STEAM, talk about others. And I think sometimes we forget our female population and we forget sports as an avenue for an increase in education, reduction of teen pregnancy, reduction of drug abuse. So just want to applaud you for being here. I'm a big advocate for female sports. So thank you. One question that I did have for you. What's your background as far as the staff that actually worked with the girls? Do you guys are all fingerprinted, cleared through the process?
Yes, we have background checks. We don't have LifeScan if that's what you're asking. Sounds like that's the process. It's not required, but our girls, I mean, we definitely pass a background check to get into a lot of the organizations for the tournaments. The background of our staff is primarily myself. I have a bachelor's degree in chemistry. I mean, that's, not that expands, but as far as LifeScans, no, they do not get LifeScan. But they do have, for us to get our insurance, we do have a background check for our coaches.
Okay. I would highly encourage LifeScans on all coaches, on any sports teams.
Thank you. We'll take that, definitely take that into consideration.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Perez. Commissioner Frazier?
Thank you for your presentation. I just had two questions. What do you base your low-income threshold on? Where do you get that number, that magic low-income number that determines who you serve?
Well, a lot of it has to do, I mean, we've never been in this type of situation where we had to take applications. But a lot of the players that we have, they come from single-family homes. We know this because a lot of them, they can't afford the hotels. Usually we have to buy a hotel, pair groups up, have a chaperone to take the girls. It's, I mean, we just know, I mean, we're intimate with all the players on our team that we know a lot of the financial situations. And a lot of it has to do with our program having to cover a lot of the expenses, whether it's a uniform, tournament fees that these people had to pay. We kind of, we kind of help supplement that.
So it's a subjective determination on low-income because traditionally, single-parent households are not necessarily the course. Or do they, there are some single, single parent incomes that are larger than dual-parent incomes at times? So it's a subjective based on your knowledge of the child and that family unit?
Yes, and it has to do a lot. When they're asking us for help, we definitely know the situation. I usually know where they work, you know. You get to be friends with them, you know their situation. So as far as a hard application where we have their tax records, we do not have that. But we just know the situation because, I mean, one is, a lot of these girls can't play for any other program. And that's why people, a lot of people refer to us. They know we have a very strong program at a very low cost and one that's always willing to work with them. Because a lot of times, you know, for uniforms, we pay, we buy it. And then they pay over, you know, they make installments and payments, you know, to cover the cost of the uniforms. I mean, that's just where we know a lot of the girls that we serve are from low-income.
Okay. And because going into a sport and achieving, like you said, some of your, some of your clients have gone on to be all-starters and really perform well. That in and of itself adds a degree of stress and anxiety that they wouldn't probably have otherwise dealt with because they wouldn't have been part of your program. Is there some type of counseling mechanism or a part to your program that helps them deal with stress, anxiety, keeping a schedule, the time management, all of the new stresses that they're both putting themselves under and that they're being put under with these new goals?
Unfortunately, I wear a lot of hats, so I do serve in that capacity in college. I mean, unfortunately, I suffered with, was it test anxiety? So I went through a lot of classes to help with that type of stress. A lot of those skills that I learned there, I give to the girls in preparation. A lot of times, I get nervous before tournaments, before tests. I give them breathing techniques. I definitely, I mean, although it's a sport, a softball program, a lot of the discussions that we have are, they transcend just softball. It has to do more for their life. And you know, our ultimate goal is really to have these girls, you know, do something that they can be proud of in their life. The fortunate thing with softball, when we have these discussions with them, the stuff that they remember and they take, we know this because now we're starting to have girls come back from college. They talk about a lot of the things that we did prepare them for. Unfortunately, they, they say like, I wish I would have listened a little bit more. But we definitely try to provide them all the tools that they would need to help with that type of anxiety. The time management really helps with the stressors of, especially when they get to high school. Before that, it's not that big of an issue, but with exams, you know, midterms, finals, that's where we have time management. I have, I have worksheets that I have that I help them go through. And I try to help them manage their time. You know, because I tell them, you know, they come to me, they say, well, I had all this going on. I'm like, well, I could look at their sheet, because they turn in a sheet that they submit. And I tell them, like, you can plan accordingly. You have a lot of hours in the day, you just got to learn how to manage them. I wish we would have a staff that we could provide more support for. But unfortunately, I realize primarily I'm me and a couple of individuals that help me out.
I'm a huge advocate for especially youth sports, men and women. So I appreciate all the efforts that you're doing. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Frazier. Commissioner Tardif?
Thank you for your presentation. Just kind of like to get an idea of where you play. Are there schools, community parks? How are the tournaments arranged? How far do you travel? General things like that.
Okay. Unfortunately, there's not a lot of fields available for softball. There's tons of softball fields, but a lot of, unfortunately, a lot of them go to soccer. So we're primarily located at, out of Thornton Park, over there off Secret Stroom in Bristol. That's our primary home that we're actually able to play like scrimmage games, practice games. We're usually, we are there on Wednesdays and Sundays. Other than that, we have, we're able, we have access to Santiago for, during the week, for Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, that we'll do practices out of. Outside of that, we just, we're able, if fields become available, we use those as needed. I guess we're fortunate. I mean, we don't have the resources to be big. So we don't need as many fields as maybe a larger program would need. But those are our fields. As far as tournaments or how those are arranged, we play throughout the United States various times of the year, but primarily more in the summer and depending on the age group. Younger ages, usually they're primarily located within the Southwest. They probably travel as far as maybe Reno, Arizona, all this southern, western states for their tournaments. Especially like a national tournament, they'll go out. As they get older, a lot of the big recruiting events, the major one is in Colorado. So that's a trip that they make every year to Colorado. A lot of the mid-states will travel out for other type of recruiting events that we'll try to get them out to. Unfortunately, we don't have the resources of some big events in the East Coast that we've, we've tried to fundraise for, but we weren't able to, you know, garner enough funds. But there's definitely that potential. As far as tournaments, there's organizations and sites that put together major tournament events. And we participate in all those type of events. I'm sorry if I missed anything, but I hope.
No, that's great. Thank you. Very thorough.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Tardif. Commissioner Vasquez?
Well, I was just wondering if by successful you meant all, and I guess you do from hearing your presentation, all the way up to the pro level?
I'm sorry, could you repeat that last part?
By successful, do you mean all the way up to the professional?
We would hope, yes. I mean, we def, there's girls here that definitely have the capability. Unfortunately, I mean, I have plenty of stories with girls that just quit. I mean, they definitely had the talent. But unfortunately, especially with young female athletes, a lot of it has to do with self-confidence. I mean, that's something that we definitely strive to strengthen and enforce in them. But a lot of the girls, I mean, they're great athletes, everybody thinks they're great athletes, but they just don't think they're good enough to pursue that. You know, that's why some of them don't even go to college, which is unfortunate. They'll just stop, you know, that pressure, as was discussed earlier, gets too great. And they just don't feel, they don't have no type of infrastructure to try to help them be successful. And that's one of the things that we've tried to change the last couple of years and is to try, try to provide more support in that aspect. Because the first batch of girls that we got through, we saw that, we were shocked. I mean, they were great athletes, but in their mind, they just didn't think they were good enough. And we're like, everybody's asking about you and, you know, they think you're a great player. So yes, I mean, there's definitely that potential. As they go off to college, how successful they are there will dictate. There's definitely pro leagues that are paying now. There was a stat that came out on ESPN. Now, I guess softball is considered a profitable sport in college, which has made the recruiting much more, I guess, competitive in the colleges to meet the demand to try to help build those programs, especially with Title IX. It's easier for the colleges to provide money across for that program. And from college, if they're successful, then they draft out of there. And they have pro leagues throughout the United States now. And the biggest ones are usually out of Japan. I mean, Japan has always been a huge advocate for softball. And a lot of players travel over to Japan and play there. And a lot of them came out of Orange County and the surrounding areas.
Thank you. Vice Chair Santana?
Yeah, I'll make it very quick. You've been around for sixteen years, is that correct?
Yes, I believe it was two thousand and three, two thousand and four was when we started. So we got sixteen.
Awesome. What is the average cost a parent would incur?
The average cost?
That's uniform, travel, and it gets pretty expensive.
With travel, it depends, with travel, that part varies. But as far as the average cost for our fees, a parent would pay, I think, twelve hundred for the full year.
Twelve hundred full year? And so they make payments?
Yeah, they, we put them on monthly payment plan, which is very, very cheap for, especially not just the tournament costs. Right now, they keep going up every year. I mean, a national tournament costs us two thousand, two hundred dollars. So total average cost, I'll just exclude travel right now from our program would be, the first year, I would say probably roughly a little under two thousand. That's excluding uniforms, but if they continue with us, they don't have to buy an additional uniform. After that, it's pretty much about twelve hundred a year that they would pay. Now, travel, as I said, the younger ages, we limit the amount of travel that they make. I would assume less than a thousand dollars that they will incur in travel costs as far as hotels. After that, when we get to recruiting ages, that cost would definitely go up with some of the larger tournaments being out of state with probably about four thousand dollars in travel costs.
Great. And how do you recruit? How do you recruit?
One is there's websites that we post, but we try to, just out of the local rec league, we're known now as far as if somebody wants to play at a higher level and is considered to be competitive in softball, that we're the, fortunately, we're, well, I guess it is fortunate. We're the only gig in town. So everybody knows if you want to go to that level here in the city, you go to Extreme.
So is this a weekend program or an after-school program?
This is, I would say both. I mean, we practice throughout the week. One of the things that we try to do is keep, you know, the girls busy. It helps keep them out of trouble. And it's been brought up at different presentations here. There's, you know, teen pregnancy, there's other things that they have to deal with. So we practice about two, three weeks on Monday through Friday. And then we, we play or practice on Saturday and Sunday. So we eat up a mass amount of their free time.
So how do you connect, uh, softball to higher education?
Uh, well, one is as a means for a lot of the people that are in our program, they, I mean, I, I have countless stories of girls that just didn't think they were smarted, you know, how a girl, she was gonna try to go onto the military, cause she just thought she was dumb. And I was like, you know, you just gotta work harder at studies. Um, her love for softball was so great that she actually worked so hard to get her grades up and actually, you know, had a red shirt last year because of, um, academics and now is in college and is planning to transfer to a four-year. Um, I, I would say how I can relate those is, we build a program that that's what we're gearing them towards. So it's not really an option for them if they're gonna play with us and continue with us. That's not the requirement that they have to, to start with us. But as, as they continue, it's always, I, I try to, we try to limit the options they have. They think that, oh, they shouldn't play. I was like, well, you definitely could be successful at this. Why don't you play this out? Um, and a lot of the people, as I said, are financially strapped, so they see this opportunity for free education.
Great.
Which a lot of them get. So that's how I can relate the two. So if.
Yeah.
Cause they, they want, cause they know they can't afford college and some of these girls go to, you know, I had a girl go to Maryland. I mean, they, no way they could ever afford that type of program. Um, but they got a, they, you know, there was a picture, she was a good pitcher. Got a full scholarship, so now they were willing to go travel over there to play.
If awarded, uh, your maximum out, would you be open to looking at other sites or locations? Not just focus primarily on, on one corridor of the city?
No, we would love to open up. It's just not available for us in regards to fields. Um, we know there's a big need on the other side of Santa Ana, which, uh, we definitely would like to have a presence in. It's just we don't have access to the fields to be able to, one, practice out of there, to make it closer for them, which is an issue that we've had just from within the city itself, is driving to Thornton to get to our, our fields. Uh, we would definitely be open to that.
And lastly, what is your, uh, staff ratio from men to women?
Um, I think we're hiring women. I've been, we bring in a lot of our former players, so I think, uh.
You are. The reason why I ask is because it says that you have a, a trouble time, uh, holding on to your coaches. Cause sometimes the coaches just pick up and take, pretty much scout the best athletes and take them with them.
And they take them away and they go to bigger programs in the surrounding cities. Um, yeah, right now, what I've been fortunate while we've been able to anchor teams is returning players that are actually like full-time coaches now, not just helping out. And there's just a couple, a few other coaches like myself, and we've just committed ourselves to, you know, uh, before we were trying to grow to try to get more people involved and, uh, we were spreading ourselves too thin. And we've consolidated and tried to focus on, to build that from within. But the ratio itself, I think right now it's, uh, six female coaches and four male coaches. So we have a higher ratio and I expect that to grow because more of my players that are getting ready to get out of college have asked that, have indicated that they would like to come back and help and start trying to help staff, our coaching staffs for, for us to expand and get bigger with our, our teams. As our girls get older.
Thank you, sir. Nothing further.
Thank you.
Thank you. I have no questions. Just thank you for the work you're doing and for investing in our female youth.
Thank you.
Thank you. I would now like to call forward our next speaker to present their proposal. And that's gonna be Second Chance Orange County for their More Second Chances program.
Good evening. Thank you for allowing me to take a few minutes of your time to talk about something that is dear to my heart. Um, I work, um, for Second Chance Orange County, which I, I don't know how many of you know what that is. But if you look at the picture up there, that's what I would like to see happen to everyone we work to help. And that is to free themselves from the, the chains of addiction. And among all of you here, I would wager that most of you have someone in your personal life who has had a problem with drugs or alcohol. I certainly have. My daughter-in-law was killed in a one-car accident a year and a half ago. And she was under the influence at the time. So that's one of the reasons that I devote my time to this project. And, um, the reason I'm still here is because I see the potential that it has for helping people who have nowhere else to go. As you know, in Santa Ana, you have a, a growing problem with, um, homelessness. And as you also know, many of the homeless who, um, you are trying so desperately to help have very significant issues, um, addiction being one of the primary ones. Last year, in two thousand eighteen, in Orange County, sixty-nine people died from overdoses. Sixty-nine homeless people died from overdoses. Thirty-seven of those were, uh, excuse me, back me up. Sixty-seven people died homeless last year in Orange County. Of that group, thirty-seven overdosed. I'm happy to tell you that Second Chances has provided, um, enough service and support that not one person we have helped has overdosed. And that's a big step if you know anything about addiction. What do we do? We, we look for the people who have lost hope and have very little help. People who have, um, abandoned original values, many of them, people who grew up just like you and I did, but made bad choices as younger people and wound up homeless, won, lost their jobs, lost their family and lost their potential to serve in society as a contributing member. They wind up in homeless shelters, um, and once they're, or in jail, many of them in jail. And when they leave jail, they go to the street. You go to, you take a, a formerly addicted person out of jail and put them on the street. And the options that they have are few, if any. And a, a lifestyle that they're used to is pretty easy to get back into. So we are trying desperately to eliminate what we call recidivism, where those people do not go back to jail. I'm proud to tell you that over the three years we've been working, not one person has gone back to a prison under our circumstances. We help low-income, when I say low-income, I should say no income, because there's nobody in our program with any money, who are recovering and have been sober for thirty days. In other words, we're not taking them out of the drunk tank. We're taking people who have made a commitment to put their lives back together. And to return to productive life. Now, for each person, that's different. Um, there are some who actually have college degrees who have just made really bad decisions. There are some who've never put their lives together from the very beginning and they need, um, support from a licensed marriage and family counselor. Many of these people have inappropriate clothes to get a job. Some of them have, don't even understand the concept of customer service. We teach them all those things. We get them clothing. We're trying desperately in some cases to help people get their teeth fixed. People who have serious addiction problems often have serious dental problems. Um, and maybe the best thing we do is we connect with local businesses. People, um, who care about the same kinds of things you all care about and I care about. They're willing to give somebody a second chance. And they got a going business and they've got great employees and they say to themselves, why would I wanna hire somebody that just got out of jail? And who has a history of addiction? Well, maybe you wanna do that because you're trying to do something for your fellow, fellow man and maybe it's time to step up. And we talk, I talk them into it. I'm a good, I'm a good arm twister. So we have people willing to give these people jobs. And that's saying something. If you, any of you know anybody that wants to help us, let us know. Um, we began working in Santa Ana last year and it's been a, um, rewarding experience. Um, challenging clients, I must say. When we wrote our grant last year, we asked for money for, we, we wound up with money for eleven people. Now, that doesn't sound like very much when you just heard from people who take care of seven thousand, um, kids playing sports. Those seven thousand kids didn't just get out of jail and don't have addiction problems and they have hope. And we're taking the people that everybody gave up on. So our goal was eleven. How many have we helped in Santa Ana this year? Twenty-eight. Seven of those people are working right now. One of them, one of them started this last Monday. Um, we have seventeen people who've completed our skills training and eight individuals, um, we're in the process of getting resumes for right now. Remember this, the plaza? Just gonna show you a few pictures. That lady in that picture is Deb Johnson, the CEO of this organization, who couldn't be here tonight, cause she has to be somewhere else doing the same thing I'm doing. Um, and one of her volunteers that helped on that day. And we collected some people out of that group and I'll show you some pictures of our success stories. This is Glenn. Meet Glenn. He was homeless when we met him. He's been working, uh, he recently had a setback with some medical issues, but we went to visit him in a hospital. They kept his job for him because they like him so much and he's going back. He's in permanent supportive housing and we all jumped around the office when that happened. On the left in that picture, we have a, a gentleman who is learning, is getting a CPR, first aid, um, certification. So he can take the job that's being offered. On the right is Denise, a woman who's been homeless, what she says, for her entire life. This is the first time she's been sober for sixty days that she can remember. And it's the first time she's ever had a job that paid her a paycheck. Um, that's Greg. And the picture at the bottom is, um, the classes that we offer. Most of these classes are being offered at homeless shelters for the people that are there. That woman on the left has four children, started work on Monday, has been, um, sober now for probably eighty days. There's another class going on at the Regina House. This one is an interesting, this is a pair, both sober now, that we were able to reconnect both of those people with their children. They, we paid for their marriage license. Both are sober and both are living in permanent housing. So from all of us to all of you, thank you for putting your support in us last year. And this is our request to continue that relationship. And if I can answer questions, happy to do so.
Thank you. I'll begin my left with Commissioner, Vice Chair Santana.
Thank you, Trevin Ramos. Uh, thank you for being here and fulfilling your, your daughter's legacy. I know it's a very difficult, um, challenge to uptake because it's, it's, it's remnant everywhere you step outside and you see our civic center and different areas. Uh, just two simple questions. How many program staff do you have?
We have one full-time, more than full-time. Deb works eighty hours a week. Uh, a full-time, um, case manager, clerical person. I work about thirty hours a week, but I don't get paid, I don't take a salary.
Right. Okay.
We'd like to hire another full-time case manager.
Of course.
And have a job opening right now, but we haven't filled it yet.
Beautiful. And where is your location?
The Melinda Hoag, um, Center for Healthy Living in Newport Beach has given us free, um, pre-office space. Uh, unfortunately, it has no, um, confidential meeting space. And given the kind of clientele we help, it's important that we show these people respect and dignity. And so we are looking to move to a facility that's being avail, made available to us from the Orange County Sanitation District. And that's where we're in the process of a move right now. Love the Melinda Hoag people, but it just was a too small a space for, we're growing. We've tri, we're, we're tripling our, our services over the past three years.
Thank you. Nothing further.
Thank you. Commissioner Vazquez.
I don't have any questions, but thanks for your presentation.
Thank you. Commissioner Tardif.
Thank you for your presentation. I don't have any questions.
Thank you. Commissioner Frazier.
Thank you for your presentation. Um, recovery is something that, that really means a lot to me in my life. So I appreciate your efforts and, and the, uh, the challenges that you face. Um, to, to that degree, um, how does your program differ from city and county programs that may offer the same services? Um, how, is there?
They differ very dramatically. There isn't any other, um, service in Orange County doing precisely what we do. There are others doing wonderful things and by saying that, I'm not knocking anything that, um, some of the other services provide. But we are one-on-one wraparound. So if Vince Frazier comes in, we look at what Vince's needs are personally. You don't have good glasses. We gotta get an optometrist to get you new glasses. When we, when we do the intake on you, we know what your interests are. We know what your skills are. And we figure out which employer we have. Is there a match somewhere for you? And what services are you lack? Maybe customer service isn't your best forte. We gotta get you into that class. So it's a hand-holding operation as opposed to taking people in, in small groups and sticking them in a computer lab where they do career research on a computer and hope, and you hope that they can read what they're seeing, for that matter. So it's a, it's a one-on-one. And that's why sometimes people say, well, you aren't serving very many people. Well, we're holding everybody's hand and, uh, we couldn't do that for four hundred people at once.
And, uh, and, yeah, because the statistic is three percent that will stay sober for any length of.
I know, I know the statistics. Where, you know, but we are changing some of those statistics. If a homeless, helpless, hopeless person has one person that's ragging on them, calling them every week, meeting with them, getting, getting them clothes. We, we dress most of the people that we serve because they really don't have the kind of clothes that you go to an interview in. So those are the kind of things that make us a little unique.
Okay. And I just have two more questions. The other question is, uh, when you're, when you're dealing with a population that typically spends, uh, a portion of their, their life in jail, um, you have to combat institutionalism.
I'm sorry.
You have to combat institutionalism. Um, how do you guys address that in your program?
I don't know how to answer that, to be quite honest with you. Um, we take everybody where they're coming from. Unfortunately, the CEO of our organization has just welcomed her own son back from prison. So there's a, an element of personal understanding here. Deb began this project because she tried so desperately to help her own son. And was not successful. So she's decided with everything she learned trying to help him, to help other people. And so the institutionalism you talk about is something she's extremely familiar with. Um, you can be sure of that. And I, my, my professional background is as a school administrator. I was an assistant superintendent of schools for a very large school district. So you talk about institutionalism, I got that down pretty well.
And now my last question is, uh, do you see this as a program that, that has the potential to be scalable and bring?
Yes. I, I wouldn't be here if it wasn't for that. As I mentioned to you, I am semi-retired. I still work somewhat. But this is, um, this has become one of my passions because I care about the homeless, just like so many other people that say, what can I do? You know, that you look at the homeless problem and you go, oh, let other people who know more do some. Well, if everybody takes that attitude, nothing's gonna change. So I do believe that for a small percentage of the population, this is a program that works. Just like there are other issues in the homeless, um, but this is, this is one avenue that I can see based on our own success statistics. Small, but meaningful. And we pay attention to all the trends and all the studies and all the data sets that are out there for us to take a look at to see, is there anything we're missing? And we're, we, we are working in four cities. So there's also an element of, um, which I can just mention quite briefly, different levels of cooperation and different levels of enthusiasm and different levels of support for what we do from city people. And I would like to publicly thank David for his, uh, interactions with, with us. It's, he's been very, very responsive. I'm very impressed to work with him. And the whole city of Santa Ana. So, um, thank you for everything you're doing.
Well, thank you. Thank you for your presentation and I definitely wish you the best in your future endeavors with this program.
Thank you. Commissioner Perez.
Thank you. First of all, sorry for your loss.
Pardon me?
Sorry for your loss. And just wanna say thank you for your presentation. No questions.
Thank you. I, I also have no questions. Just thank you for all the work that you're doing. Uh, you are filling a, a gap that wasn't being filled before. So we appreciate your work. Uh, I would now like to call forward our next speaker that is gonna be, uh, to present their proposal. And that's gonna be Taller San Jose Hope Builders for their business applications. Now, I would just like to remind everybody that we are also validating parking. Uh, you can see our recording secretary if you need validation.
Hi, David. Uh, good evening. I'm Shawna Smith. I am the executive director of Hope Builders and it's my privilege to have worked with that organization for over twenty years here in the city of Santa Ana. Uh, at Hope Builders, we believe that career opportunities can change lives. And since nineteen ninety-five, we focused on providing transformative job training and supportive services that, uh, target low-income youth and young adults who are not connected to schools. who are not connected to school and work opportunities. And largely that's because of barriers that exist in their lives. Maybe it's need for basic skills remediation in math or language skills. It could be previous incarceration, foster care involvement, pregnancy at a young age. All those things that get in the way of young people being able to advance their education and their careers. We focus on creating a individual plan for each young person that comes into our program, targeting a career path that allows them to enter the workforce and have upward mobility. So they really get a strong foothold into young adulthood. And we also acknowledge that it's not just the marketable job skills that help young people be successful, but it's life stability. So that requires a lot of adult mentoring and coaching and supportive services that help young people address those underlying barriers and resolve and manage them as they move forward. We focus on four industry pathways, so construction, healthcare, business services, and information technology. For this proposal, we are asking for support for our business applications program. We partner with Santa Ana College to offer that program. It's a office management certificate where participants earn 18 credits towards their AA degree and complete the certificate at the college. And then we provide our wraparound services, our life skills, employment readiness, and ongoing coaching and job placement. So, it's great, we have all those services. We help young people strengthen themselves and add to their skills. But equally as important is our relationships with the employer community. So, having employer buy-in in providing opportunities for employment for young people to invest and advance themselves is really critical to their success. So, we have a full employment services team that works with local employers to identify, to create opportunities to enter a quality job. And we really focus on helping young people enter their first job at a minimum of $14 an hour, as I said, in a career pathway that allows them through ongoing education, work experience, or apprenticeship to advance themselves over time. We know that young people don't transform their lives overnight and so our commitment to young people is to walk alongside them for an extended period of time. And while the intensive part of our services happen in a, in the first six months of their time with us, we stick with young people for an additional two years after they complete our training to ensure they really do get a strong work, hold in the workforce or in an educational track and can advance themselves. We appreciate the support you gave us last year. And what we were able to provide in the way of outcomes is 71% of the young people who start our program entered a quality job. 84% of them improved their life stability and 78% improved their math and language skills. So I think our outcomes are really strong indicators for not only the depth of the support that we provide young people, but how far we really propel them forward. So happy to answer any questions you might have about Hope Builders.
Thank you. I'll begin on my right. Commissioner Perez?
Good afternoon, Shawna. How you doing today?
Good. I could've had you do this.
How many students are you currently, currently serving in Santa Ana right now?
So, our total population is 605 youth. We served last year.
Wow.
And of that, about 40% are Santa Ana residents. So we really, they're our largest city, but we also, two years ago, opened a site in Anaheim and so have been able to expand our services there as well.
Excellent. Of the students that actually are from Santa Ana, I know you have various programs.
Yes.
Do you have a breakdown of where those populations and those pockets? Is it like 20% are in vocational or home building construction, do you?
That's a great question. I don't know off the top of my head.
Yeah, just a rough estimate.
Yeah, so I can give you an idea of the number of trainings for each we offer. So last year, we offered three construction training programs. Those are 25 each, so 75 youth were able to be in that program. In healthcare, we had, I believe we had five, again, 25 youth in those, so 125 youth in our healthcare programs. IT was new last year. We offered two cohorts and I think those were smaller. Those were about 15, so there were about 30 youth. And then we had, in our business services, we were able to also offer two or three in that as well. So, those are all new enrollments, but as I mentioned, we serve youth for two years. So the other part of that are the youth who are continuing to provide employment services, ongoing mentoring and coaching for, in the second year of their program.
Excellent, thank you very much. No more questions.
Thank you. Commissioner Fraser?
Thank you for your presentation. I have no questions.
Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Tardif?
Thank you for your presentation. I'm a sheet and I'm a contractor, so that's involved with construction.
Yes.
And I was wondering if you could give us maybe a little rundown on how your construction program is run, how many students are involved in that?
Yes, so as I mentioned, this year, we will serve 75 youth in our construction training program. That's a really interesting model. They spend the first 10 weeks full-time in our training program and then they spend 10 weeks onsite with an employer in a full-time paid internship. So they're in all kinds of different trades. They're in carpentry, drywall, painting, glazing, plumbing, electrical. They get to select the trade that they're interested in. We work with a local employer for that on-the-job training. And our goal is that they will get hired full-time out of that on-the-job experience. And in our last, as an example, in our last cohort, 100% of the youth got employment offers out of that earn-and-learn opportunity. So that's a really special program in that we provide an extended paid internship as part of that. Our other programs, including the business, do also include internships, but they're only four weeks and they're unpaid. Did that answer your question?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Vasquez?
Oh, I'm just wondering if the last son who says still, still produces those really neat wooden benches.
No, we don't. But that's really what led us to the construction industry. So I appreciate that you remember our history. And actually, we keep those benches at all of our sites to remember where we came from. They're an important part of our history. And they led us to the construction industry. So you'll have to, I, I, I used to say, like, people need to watch out on Antiques Roadshow 'cause in a couple of years, they're gonna show up there. We'll all be famous.
Thank you. Vice Chair Santana?
Yes, just a couple of questions. Thank you for your presentation. I personally had a friend who attended your program for the healthcare. Do the students receive a stipend?
They do. Thank you for asking. I forgot that. Yes, so during the training portion, they receive a weekly stipend of $75. That's really to assist them and having something to contribute financially to our family. We know for our young people, obvious, oftentimes, financial limitations keep them from advancing their education. During the internship period, the four weeks in our healthcare program when they're in the field, they're not allowed to receive an inter, an incentive because they need those hours towards their state-level accreditation. So, but for the time they're in the training, the 16 weeks ahead of that, they receive a stipend. They're also eligible to receive support with childcare as well as transportation. So that might be bus passes or gas cards or assistance with carpooling. And, and then again, the childcare support is based on the number of children and whether or not that person is the primary parent.
Beautiful. I know that some of the challenges is for youth and for young people is the 8:30 AM to 4:00 PM. It's, it's a long day, so I know this helps out a lot. For tracking the, your measure, measuring your student's success, how do you track your student's success in Santa Ana?
Yeah, so we have a data management system that we utilize and also, and we have a regular point so we're doing data collection. But honestly, most of the data happens because we build strong relationships with our young people and we stay connected with them over time, right? So you can have the best data management system, but if young people don't return your calls or they're not in a relationship with you, you're not gonna know how they're doing. So we really foster deep personal relationships with our youth to ensure that we can track their success over time and report on that.
And one last question.
Sure.
How do you organically capture the students who wanna go to Taller San Jose from other programs?
Yeah.
I know there's a partnership with Santa College, but what else, I mean, is there a walk-in? Or how, what are some ways that folks can-
Right, so we really think of ourselves related as a different front door to the community college. A lot of young people are not going to go to the campus and register. They don't see themselves as college students yet. And so, we feel like we're a much softer entry point oftentimes. But as far as our outreach, we have an outreach team that's out in the community. We do, we canvass neighborhoods, we go to community fairs and events. We do outreach at other partner organizations. We have referral relationships. We work with probation, we work with parole. Anybody will go to churches and set up a table after services. Wherever young people are, we go to find them. But, close to 65% of the youth that come into our program are referred word of mouth. So the power of that personal testimony is really what drives someone to say, "I'm gonna take this challenge on." So while we do a lot of outreach and we know it takes a young person many times, they've gotta be touched many times before they walk through our door. We do all those things and then really rely on word of mouth on top of that. In addition to our partnership with Santa Ana College, we also are partnered with two trade organizations. So we really try to link young people to apprenticeship as well. So those would be some of the other partners on the educational side.
Thank you. Nothing further for me.
Thank you.
Thank you. I have no questions. Thank you for your presentation.
Okay, thanks so much.
Madam Chair?
I would like to call forward our next speaker.
I just, I just have one short question, I'm sorry. When you, when you were talking about apprenticeships and things like that, for the students that you have that decide that this is their vocation, that they wanna, that they wanna dive into for the rest of their lives, there's traditionally been the Masons and a couple of their programs that really help those individuals focus in on that. Do you have relationships that will get them on the path to either becoming journeymen or starting down that, that path of really honing those skills?
Yes, we do. And we work with both, so we have an MOU with the Southwest Carpenters Union. We also have an agreement with the Building Trades Council through our partnership with Santa Ana College. So those are two direct ways they can go to union apprenticeship. And then we also maintain relationship with open shop apprenticeships such as AGC, Associated General Contractors, and ABC, who, Associated Builders and Contractors, who are both located here in Orange County. And so all of those provide opportunities. We really just try to serve as advocates for young people and educate them as to how do they continue to advance themselves in that career.
Fantastic, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'd like to call forward our next speaker to present their proposal. It's gonna be the Cambodian family for their Plan Ahead Youth Program.
Good evening, Commissioners. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Vatana Pung. I'm the executive director of the Cambodian Family Community Center, which is a local nonprofit based in Santa Ana, founded about 40 years ago through the influx of the Cambodian refugees who came to America as a result of the Myanmar genocide war that happened in Cambodia about 1975. So I just wanted to give you a brief background. I'm gonna be presenting here today with my colleagues, Sophia Cerberon, Youth Program Coordinator. So, the Cambodian families were founded in 1980 by a group of Cambodian refugees who came here because of the civil war that I mentioned. And when they came here, they founded the organizations. And later on, they're not only serving Cambodian, they expanded our services to people, immigrants, refugees from around the world, including from Vietnam, from Mexico, from Iran, from other, many other countries. And we have been a trusted place by many refugee and immigrants population, which is the most underserved in our county, especially in the city of Santa Ana as well. And currently, we have a main, a full main program. We have community health and mental health program. We have after-school Plan Ahead Youth Program, which is being presented to the commissioner today. And we also have civic engagement program and immigration relief and services. And for us, last year, we reached out to over 5,800 community members throughout Orange County, about 70% from Santa Ana. And we served an unduplicated 960 clients last year. And then we provided over 15,000 services per year to all community members throughout Orange County, predominantly from Orange County, from Santa Ana. And those are the small, uh, uh, program history of our Plan Ahead Youth Program. So our Plan Ahead Youth Program has been in existence for 28 years. So we, the program was founded in 1980 because a lot of gang activity around Bishop Administrative Area, we had the predominance of the Cambodian refugees and also the immigrants from Mexico live there. So because of that, we founded the program to respond to those gang violence, to prevent it, to make sure that all students, especially youth over there, follow the right path to academic success and also career success as well. And for our Plan Ahead Youth Program, it's not only, it's very unique because you are not paying only for one academic support. You are paying for a wraparound services which are built on four integrated areas, which my colleague will be saying, will be presenting later. That's gonna be in on academic, on health, on career, and on leadership because, and the last one is a parental support. Believe it or not, studies have shown that kids does not, a kid is not just successful because of the support from the, from the teacher, from the school, but also from the family. So we look, we look into kids as a family unit, as not just an interview at all. That's why our services are provided as a wraparound services to have the whole family. Once the family are successful, the kid will thrive in school as well. So I would like to invite my colleague to talk about all the four institutes that we have just described.
All right, thank you. So I'd like to start with our academic institute. And through our academic institute, we provide tutoring services after school from 4:00 to 6:00, Tuesdays and Thursdays and Fridays if students do come to us with need and homework. And for our academic institute, we utilize, as well as our other institutes, we utilize the 40 developmental assets as a basis through which to help identify the needs and interests that students have when they come to us at enrollment. And we also utilize some other curriculum and teaching guidance. One such one is Teaching Like a Champion. I'm not sure if you're familiar with that resource. And then we also utilize the Six Pillars of Character. Two of these we've used like historically for the past 28 years. And the Teaching Like a Champion is actually something that our recent staff decided to work together to sort of build momentum around how to get youth the, through the services they need to improve their grades at school, but also to build momentum through their future because they should eventually leave our program after many years growing up in our program. We do anticipate that they leave our program fully prepared and fully confident for their futures. And then our Career Institute, we focus on, we provide workshops for students to learn about different career paths and also based on their interests that they've selected at enrollment with their families. And then we also do invite career guest speakers to come to our agency and tell us a little bit about what they do, how, what path they had to take to get there and also to help students learn of the different opportunities to identify those interests and how to, how to pursue them. We also do take students to college visits as part of our Career Institute as well. And for our Leadership Institute, what we have here is a picture that shows some of our student leaders, young and older, coming to speak on behalf of our youth program once before at one of our city council meetings in front of you. And also two of our younger students who've identified certain qualities that they want to pursue as leaders for our youth program. And then we also have a Health Institute, which focuses not only on physical health, but also mental health. Through this institute, we help students become, you know, we help them, introduce them to physical activities and being nutritiously healthy as well as physically healthy and mentally healthy. Again, this is also where our services do touch the lives of the parents as well because for a lot of our clients, we're dealing with traumatic histories and as immigrants, as refugees. And so we work together to help identify the assets in youth, but also within their parents, that help them bring greater health and wellbeing to their families. And then this is one of our impact stories. Lakana is a student who is, started out struggling with some academic needs and she grew up- with some academic needs, and she grew up to be one of our really centered and certainly confident young women student leaders. And not only that, she is currently pursuing an interest to study in engineering and possibly either that or biochemistry, I believe, were her two things that she's mentioned she wanted to study now when she goes off to college. And she's a junior now, so she still has another year as one of our student leaders. And we hope to continue to see her work and improve those STEAM opportunities for our younger youth as well. So thank you so much for having us here today, and we greatly appreciate the opportunity to speak with you. If you have any questions, we would be more than happy to answer them.
Thank you. I'll begin with Vice Chair Santana.
Thank you, Chair Ramos. And thank you, Cambodian family. Happy early birthday. I know you guys have done a lot of great work here in the community. And the question I had is, can you describe a little bit more of the work you're doing in the neighborhood? I know that you guys have done some great stuff in the town, but can you just elaborate a little bit more?
Yes, because we know that collaborative is very important. We have been in many collaborative space. One is the Intersection Initiative, which is headed by the St. Joe Hospital, and also the lead agencies at Kennedy Commission. So we're part of that to work around the Lacey neighborhood, and that is one of the projects. And the second project, we're also part of the collaborative that engage with the civic engagement called Santa Ana Being Healthy Community, where we train community members to be able to speak out about the needs in the community. For example, as you know, that the Mental Health Services Act in Orange County has come down about 10 years ago, which they take 1% tax of the millionaire, and then the money have to come to provide services to underserved community. However, our Cambodian community, who are the survivor of the Cambodian genocide, who suffer about sick PTSD and depression, have not been able to access the services. So we work with Santa Ana Being Healthy Community to learn from the Latino community, how to do a community organizing. And then we learn from them, and then our community came together and started to do community organizing. As a result, we were able to reflect the needs of the mental health need of our community and the MHSA Mental Health Service Plan in Orange County for the next three years. So that's one of the sets that we've been part of the collaborative.
Yeah, I think we often forget that, you know, when folks are fleeing, and refugees, there's a lot of stress and trauma and factors that takes into place. And then, as well as, the population of the Cambodians are now aging, right? So they're now requiring different services, such as county and health and mental. So just really quick, can you give us like a 30-second snapshot of CalOptima and how you guys are working closely with CalOptima?
With CalOptima?
Yeah.
Yeah. So for CalOptima, we've been working them on the educational section. We have not been able to provide, to get the direct services because they are the health plan. So what happened is that we've been part of the collaborative where we talk, we help them do the need assessment so that they can serve their member better. And most of our Cambodian community members are part of the CalOptima member as well, but because of the cultural, the linguistic problem, they have not been able to access the services. So what we have done, we tried to bridge the gaps between CalOptima and also our communities.
And that's the language gap?
The language gap, and also transportation, and the cultural differences
Okay.
between the providers that are part of CalOptima and also our community members.
Got it. That's it for me, but thank you for the hard work. And I'm sure our Commissioners have more questions following?
Thank you. Moving on to Commissioner Vasquez.
I don't have any questions.
Thank you. Commissioner Tardif?
Thank you for your presentation. I don't have any questions.
Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Fraser?
Thank you for your presentation. I'm just curious, with, like it was mentioned a moment ago, you have 40% of your clientele that's aging, over 61 years old. And then, you're only representing a 27% male population after a 38-year program. What do you, what have you experienced as the greatest hurdle for having more men associate with your program? And how is the Cambodian family addressing the possibility for more men needing your service?
Because, so we look at the family, as you, like we said, our program beyond the wraparound services that provide the family. And in our culture, most of the time, females are probably the household that participates significantly in different programs. And that is one of the cultural barrier that how we significantly engage male in our programs, because of the cultural differences. And in fact, we have just launched the past two years a program that has now been funded by Susan Chum Coleman, Orange County, for breast cancer education. We know that our especially limited English proficiency are not able to access the breast cancer screening, like mammogram, because of the transportation and also the language barrier. So what happened, we involved males as partners, as spouse, as a partner, to be part of that, to provide the social support. So it's a social support theory here that we use, including emotional support and instrumental support, like transportation, to pick up your wife, drop her off a mammogram and things. So we have been really working very hard for the past two years to significantly involve males as part of our program. But traditionally, I think in the Latino community as well, females, especially in our parents' youth program, which is like over 90% of the participant, our program from Latino community, they also have challenges in engaging the father and also the male partners to be part of the program.
Okay, thank you. And so over the two years, have you seen an increase in male participation, and roughly about how much?
Yes. So I'm just talking only about the mammogram, because about 2000, in 2015, we had about only three males participate in the program. Now we have over 40 males participate in the program, especially they come into the breast health education as well. So this is something outside of that, but something that is very stigmatized in our community is, you know, like, "I'm a male. I don't, you know, get a higher risk for getting breast cancer," but it does happen for men as well. But also, we want to educate them that you can be part of the journey to make your wife or your female partner healthier by participating in this program. So we have seen a very significant increase of that. And we have used different models to engage the male, one of which, which is our culture, we call dances. So we have some dance classes that we engage both the female and the male together. So that is the way to get people to our program, because you cannot sit and wait for people to come. You have to find a way and strategy that are culturally, linguistically appropriate. And also, our staff speak eight different languages. We have Spanish, Chinese, Mandarin, Cambodian, Vietnamese, and also we have Kuchati, and also the last one, we have Cham, which is the Muslim, which is a language of the Muslim Cambodians.
Okay, great. And my last question is, what is your projected engagement with the male population this coming year?
This coming year, so overall, we expect it to reach 200 males in our overall program, 200.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Commissioner Perez?
Thank you for your presentation, and good job on answering all those questions. I know it was a lot, but I really appreciate that information as we make our decisions. So congratulations and good job.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. I have no questions. I just want to comment that I'm very happy to see that in the last three years when you've been funded, you've been, you've very well exceeded your goals of those who you plan to serve. And I did the math, and at the end of this year, if you continue to keep that, you're projected to serve 120 people, which is well over the 70 that you proposed that you would be serving, and it's well over the 112 that you're proposing to serve.
Thank you, Commissioner. We hope we get fully funded, so that we don't have to redo our goal. Thank you so much for your support and for allowing us to make history in Santa Ana for 40 years. So you will be invited. We will celebrate our 40th anniversary next year, 2020. It's going to be our next chapter of the Cambodian family. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I would now like to invite forward our next speaker to present their proposal. That is the Chrysalis Center. I apologize if I miss pronounced. Can you maybe begin when you're ready?
Go. Good evening. Ready? My name is Michael Graf-Wesner, and I work at a nonprofit organization called Chrysalis. And we are relatively new to Orange County. In fact, we just opened our new office in Orange County in November of last year. So if you haven't quite heard of us, that's probably why. But now we're in town. So I want to tell you a little bit about what we do in our program, just to supplement what's in the proposal, and then talk a little about what we've already been doing since we even submitted the proposal and opened our doors mid-November. So Chrysalis was founded in 1984, and our mission is to work with individuals who are coming out of homelessness or who are low income. The majority also have involvement in the criminal justice system, and they're trying to get back on their feet. We're really trying to find a pathway to self-sufficiency through employment. We sometimes talk about what we do as helping someone get ready for a job, get a job, and then keep it. Some of the stats of who we're serving, again, in our three locations in LA County, now a fourth in Orange County, all are either homeless or low income. Many have their low education levels. I mentioned a majority have some involvement in the criminal justice system and are dealing with that as they try to get back to work. About 11% have been veterans so far, and many are wrestling with other barriers like addiction and substance abuse issues. The key to our model is that everyone who comes in our program is tied to an employment specialist, essentially the case manager role, to help meet them where they're at and help them do those three things: get ready for a job, get a job, and keep it. And of course, everyone we're serving has a different history and a different background. And so that looks different depending on where someone's at. And for someone who's currently experiencing homelessness, they may be focusing on a different set of, sometimes what we call groundwork issues, before they're even ready to do that job search. So the focus is jobs, but often the case management is pretty broad on the broader barriers. And again, a lot of it is kind of mitigating or reducing any barriers. Some of them are simple. If you come in any of our centers, we have job leads on the wall. We have computers. If you don't have a computer, look for work. We have resource rooms. There's an image of one of our resource rooms where clothing, food, hygiene items, deodorant, anything you might need as you're doing your job search, sack lunches. But the list of kind of resources goes on. So some of them are relatively simple. I mentioned kind of what's happening in our lobby. If you don't have a stable address, you can use us as your message center and use the address of our centers, get mail and check it at our office. If you don't have a stable phone number, you can use us as a message center as well. We also provide counseling assistance onsite. We have scholarship fund to pay for a range of vocational training, because our focus is mostly on that job readiness assistance. We have support groups. We have a fund to pay, if you don't have your driver's license, get that back and pay those fees and fines. Material needs, like maybe if you need a uniform, tools to do your job. So try and again, reduce any barriers and some legal services related to employment. One of the things that makes us unique is that many years ago, we started up, kind of what are in the lingo, a social enterprise, essentially businesses that we operate, but really part of our nonprofit agency. And we've grown them into pretty big businesses, and we're growing them now in Orange County. And it's meant to be a transitional job. So if you haven't worked in a long time, just the confidence that you can work, that you can get a paycheck and just navigate the basics, sometimes isn't there. You feel like no one's going to hire you. So we hire you, and you work for us. And it's really about those soft skills professionalism. You can show up on time, you can, you know, get your pay every, we do pay the real jobs. You can put on your resume. So you can go and do that next employer in the interview, and you say, "I'm working at Chrysalis Enterprises now," and you can call them as a reference. So it's meant to be a launching pad back into the mainstream workforce. And it's not a new model. A lot of organizations do it nationally, but we've done it on a pretty big scale. So these are now multimillion-dollar businesses. We, last year, employed about 1,400 people in these businesses, and we're now trying to grow some contracts here in Orange County, and already have some. The businesses are street maintenance, temp staffing. We have a contract through a partnership with Caltrans as well, where we can do some freeway maintenance alongside the Caltrans crews. Some folks go on and work at Caltrans, or launch into a range of fields. We have a tradition, when someone gets a job, they ring the success bell, or someone ringing the bell. I think a lot of our program is the very tangible, practical things. If you don't have a resume, if you don't have access to computers, that's, you can see and feel that. I think some of it is just confidence. So if someone gets a job, they ring the bell, and everything stops in our office. You go and you see the individual in the lobby, they say the name, how they got a job, where they got it, and any words of advice. So again, it's about feeling like you're employable. And they often share leads with whoever's in the lobby, too. Some stats, actually, this is 2017, we're disclosing the books on 2018, but 2,800 people plus got jobs. The minimum wage has been tracked, sorry, the average wage has been tracking a bit above minimum. It still tends to be entry level, thank you, but again, maybe the first job they've had in a decade. And so just getting in the workforce is the first step, and we want to help them move up from there. We track, especially, we target, a lot of the research looks at the six-month mark on job retention, and we're tracking to about 70% of those who get a job are employed six months later. We're really proud of that stat. So touching on how we got here, we did a strategic plan that had us growing. And what became really clear a couple of years ago was that Orange County, from Santa Ana to a lot in central and north county especially, has a lot of need and maybe could use our services. So we went on the process of kind of meeting with partners and seeing if there was a need. And then in November, mid-November, November 14th of last year, we had a ribbon cutting, opened our office in Anaheim. So a little bit north of here, but we again, hope to serve the region and the county. We met with them for the partners that are here and are doing outreach. We did a present, you know, work onsite at the Courtyard Shelter, for example, here in Santa Ana, and doing a lot of outreach with partners locally here. And that's it. I think I've just got my end time. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. I'll begin with Commissioner Perez.
Thank you very much. How many staff do you currently have working here in Orange County?
We have 10 staff out of the office in Orange County. One of them is fundraising staff, the rest are really programmatic. And they range from employment specialists to like a business development guy who goes out and builds business relationships.
And how long you been here in Orange County?
So some of those staff we hired in advance, a couple we promoted from LA that lived in the area. But the rest were local hires, and we tried to get them on board about a month and a half to train them, so when we opened mid-November, they'd be ready to go.
Can you talk about your services specifically more in Santa Ana?
So, you know, I think I had shown briefly that list of partnerships. I think, you know, our center is obviously not based here. So I think it's going to be a mix of outreach, presentations, doing some onsite services. I mentioned the Courtyard, we've already started, working with the Minimission and the CityNet staff there, and the county staff to do some services there, to kind of be a hook to pull people in. I brought some pliers I can share. So, you know, we realize the distance is a bit of a barrier. For the proposal, you know, we hadn't been open, and we still haven't been open that long. We're trying to estimate how many might come. So I think we estimated 10% of those we're serving will be from Santa Ana. And honestly, I don't know. I think we were somewhat cautious because we didn't want to overpromise. I hope we can do more aggressive outreach and serve more, but that's how we came up with that figure. So we realize it's a distance.
Thank you. No more questions?
Thank you. Commissioner Fraser?
Thank you for your presentation. I've actually heard you guys' names quite a bit between some of your partners and whatnot throughout the city. And from what I'm hearing, it's all great based on your previous locations. But I'm curious, what do you use to determine your low-income threshold for some people that qualify for low-income?
Yeah. So obviously, we actually received CDBG funding before. So we're aware of, you know, essentially, we're inheriting the HUD/CDPG standard. So for the purposes of a grant like this, we would track and use that definition. If you walked into our offices, and I think this is, I've been at Chrysalis 12 years now, and I think it's designed to be very open and welcoming. And so there's not going to be anyone there saying, "I'm sorry, get out your tax returns, you're out." We wouldn't count them towards a grant like this, but, so that's a bit of a long answer to say, "We serve everybody."
With you guys being basically positioned in Anaheim, there's a understanding that there's going to be a lot more tracking that you guys will have to do to ensure that the money from Santa Ana goes to Santa Ana people?
Sure, yeah.
And on that note, since you are reaching a lot of low-income, if at any income at all, homeless individuals, and people that may be plagued by mental health issues, and I noticed that that was also on your slide, how do you provide that service?
Yeah, that's a good question. So the employment specialist staff are not kind of clinicians. So, you know, the focus on employment, and we're trying to, in some ways, stay in our lane. We don't do housing, we don't do health. And at the same time, yes, some of our clients are maybe symptomatic and have that need. So what we've done is we've partnered. It's looked a little different among our offices. Ideally, it's with another mental health service provider, because I like the, you know, agency connection. You have a whole agency supporting. And we essentially have subcontracted for a counselor. So they may be like two days a week. We haven't set the official schedule in Anaheim and Orange County yet. But it'll be, you know, kind of, the doctor's in, you can, still, you're working with me as your employment specialist. specialist, but hey, let's supplement this. Why don't you meet with Aaron on Mondays? It just may help. Like, you're going through a lot, you know, and I think it's not necessarily mental illness per se, so because we're not using the same health dollars, so we don't have to get an access one diagnosis. And some people are just unemployed, and we've all been unemployed, and that's depressing. You get a lot of no's. So it can also just be you're down, and you need to talk to someone. So it also is meant to be real open door, understanding that there probably is a full array of mental health care that we'd like to connect them to. So maybe you get some counseling at Chrysalis, and then you go to a mental health provider, make sure you have insurance, and get a full range of support.
Okay. And because you guys have a presence in other cities and you are nationwide, correct?
No, actually, we're just up in California. Orange County's our first out of LA.
Within California, is there the possibility, because I know we, a lot of times, we get a job that's halfway across the state, you know, either in LA or down in San Diego County or up in San Francisco. Where Chrysalis exists, and now that you're coming into Orange County, is the likelihood of somebody in Orange County being able to transfer through the Chrysalis to another location where you guys support, is that something that you guys are set up for?
It's interesting. We haven't envisioned a lot of that, although if anyone were to, either through a job or a housing opportunity, go to LA, then, so within LA, people will transfer within our multiple locations. So you can easily, hey, I got housing in another location, it's more convenient to me, and I can move sites. So yes, we're not nationally, but at least towards LA, we have other options.
And my last question is, so from what I understand, the minimum wage is set up on a schedule to increase on such and such a day as it goes. Are you guys, is wage negotiation, is that something that you guys have a finger on as far as teaching people how to negotiate for a proper wage for themselves? Since traditionally, low-income individuals don't have the negotiation skills to advocate for themselves?
Yeah, no, we definitely do some educating on that front. In addition, you know, there's been legal changes around kind of fair chance hiring policies for, you know, the background in the hiring process. Sometimes you're advocating yourself in that way. So yes, knowing what the wage is and the schedule of increases is important. I think the other piece of this is that, you know, through these transitional jobs, we're an employer, and typically, we have customers out there. And we've been a little aggressive on renegotiating so that we can increase our wages ahead of all the minimum increases. So we've been basically doing bump increases before each July and other increase, so that if you're working for us, you're going to get more money that way, too.
Okay, perfect. Thank you very much.
Yeah.
Thank you. Commissioner Tardif.
Thank you for your presentation. I don't have any questions.
Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Vazquez.
Well, thank you, but I don't have any questions at this point.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Vice Chair Santana.
Thank you, Chairman Ramos. Just a quick question. What kind of employment do your applicants seek out?
Yeah, so I'm happy to provide some more data on this. If you can download our annual report, it has like a pie chart by industry. So unlike some other workforce programs, and we do have, I guess, some specialization when you look at our social enterprises, but really, people come into our doors just wanting a job. So it's a wide range of industries. It tends to be more low-skilled and entry level, so construction, some janitorial, some maintenance, some food service. We've had a lot of success with either restaurant or other food service. Something like telemarketing, which is not the best job, but it could be a start. And transportation's been another, warehousing, logistics, forklift operator, so kind of warehouse jobs have been successful. Yeah, driving jobs, too, whether it's trucking or these local delivery type jobs.
I understand that, you know, employment is really important. We have families who have two, three jobs trying to just get by. So the fact that you're taking on the challenges is great, but I want to make sure that, you know, the folks that we empower get those, you know, a strong skilled training job that leads to, you know, with benefits and services. So that's one question. The second question I had was, you're based out of Anaheim, correct?
Yeah.
So your staff that you brought on from LA County, how familiar are they with Santa Ana?
So...
Do they live in Santa Ana? Do they...
Yeah, so she lives a little bit north of Santa Ana. So one of the staff who transferred from LA lived down here, and she was commuting, and it was brutal, so she was very happy. And the other staff person lives in like south LA County and decent commute, so not Santa Ana. But the rest of the staff have been local. So we did have two hires that were transferred, and the rest have been local. I couldn't tell you city by city of the 10 staff based here, but there's a number that are, you know, born and raised and went to school here and have a lot of, we were very cognizant that we were new to town and wanted to hire locally.
And how do you capture these applicants? How do you capture folks?
So a lot of it is, you know, in LA, a lot of it is a mix of...
Do you work with 211? Is there a referral side? Is it, you're working with the county?
Yes, 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 and yes. So we're 211-listed, other online databases, we're working with the county in other cities. We do presentations. We have a Salesforce database of all our community partners and blast out newsletters to partners, up flyers, that kind of thing.
And so who are your strong community partners here in the city of Santa Ana?
You know, we've been open a few months, so it's early. You know, so far, the most tangible has been the partnership with both the county as well as, you know, the operators of the shelter, the courtyard, so Midnight Mission and CityNet. Here are some others on the slide here, from Mercy House to Phoenix House, Wise Place, Salvation Army. The Workforce Development Board operating the Work Center, we've had some contacts with them.
Yeah, I see two good ones, which is Mercy House, which is Dwight, and then Wise Place right behind you, so good, 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 it's a good start. I know that, you know, coming into the city, it's kind of hard to break in, but just know that, you know, our city really, whenever there's an organization that crops open is more of, you know, I want to make sure that your organization has local folks, and we bring in men within and into positions of leadership because that's just more respected. We have had our fair share with like charter schools and stuff like that, so there's a community that needs help, and just want to make sure that we, as a, just a note on the slide, but thank you for your work, nothing further.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. I have no questions. Thank you for your presentation.
Thank you for the time and consideration.
I'd like to call forward our next speaker to present their proposal, and that's going to be Wise Place for their steps of independence.
I did bring some, is it okay to hand me that?
You can give them the recordings. Thank you.
Thank you. It's great to meet you. Thank you for the time. Thank you. I do not have a PowerPoint. Amy Larson. Nice to meet you, David. Yeah, thank you. It's great to see a face with the name I've been emailing for months. Good evening. My name is Amy Larson. I apologize for not having a PowerPoint this evening, but hopefully I can address all of the issues sufficiently in my remarks. I have served as a grant writer at Wise Place for six years, and I've really enjoyed listening to all the work of the fabulous organizations tonight, so I'm happy to be here. Our executive director, Bertiele Agassi, was looking forward to being here this evening. Unfortunately, she has a serious illness in her family, so she's out of town for a few days, but I thank you for the invitation to speak. For those of you who do not know us, and there are still those who do not know Wise Place, unfortunately, we have 32 years of experience and have helped almost 8,000 unaccompanied homeless women in our community move from hopeless and homeless to self-sufficiency and independence. Wise Place is an acronym for Women Inspired, Supported, and Empowered. We began in 1924 in the same building on South Broadway as the South Orange County YWCA, and we are proud of our long history of providing support and assistance to women as well as children and families. In response to the growing number of homeless women in the county, the agency launched a successful campaign to open the Hotel for Women in 1987, still in our same building on Broadway. Our core program, Steps to Independence, provides transitional shelter, clothing, healthy meals to meet the most basic needs of homeless women. We then work to develop long-term self-sufficiency by addressing employment, medical and mental health challenges, budgeting, and housing options. Case managers provide personalized service, excuse me, personalized help for each woman to overcome the issues that might have led to their homelessness. We support graduates to help them maintain their self-sufficiency and to become, continue to be productive members of our community. While there are a number of local shelter programs in the area that serve women with children and families, Wise Place is the only program solely focusing on the unaccompanied homeless woman. Wise Place supports the needs of women with diverse histories who vary in age, from emancipated foster care young women of 18 up to women much older than 60. Wise Place is grateful to you and the city of Santa Ana and the CDBG for your history of funding our program. We've been involved with you for more than 24 years, and it probably goes back longer than that. I just wasn't able to get the historical data much further back. We do understand that the CDBG funding is highly competitive and that you and reviewing all applicants want to ensure the greatest impact with your funding dollars. In 19, excuse me, in 2019 and 2020, we anticipate serving 105 women who come to us from all over Southern California. Of those, we project serving 40 Santa Ana residents, or 38% of our population. Over the past few years, we have had some challenges in accurately projecting how many Santa Ana residents we will serve, as well as accurately reporting our results to you. It is not my intention to make excuses. I would rather clarify some of the challenges that we have been dealing with, and more importantly, how we plan to address those challenges moving forward. Like many nonprofits, like most nonprofits, Wise Place operates on a very small budget and with a very small full-time staff. Many of you know our previous executive director, Kathy Bowman. She served valiantly for 22 years, and she retired in July. As of December, Bertiele Agassi joined us as our new executive director. In a very short period of time, she has brought a renewed passion, energy, and experience in turning around local nonprofits, such as Women Helping Women. In just two months, Bertiele has updated our policies and procedures, as well as installing some new ones. She has expanded our board. She is also in the process of expanding our staff, particularly our program staff. Last fall, we had a staff turnover for the first time in many years with the program staff. This meant we went from full, excuse me, three full-time program staff to only one, Demona Barlow, our program manager. As of January, we have program staff of two full-time and one part-time, and we are interviewing for one more full-time case manager. We also have added a full-time operations manager to oversee Safe Place, which is our transitional shelter. Lastly, we have expanded, Wise Place has expanded my hours. They have doubled them from one day a week to two days a week. Bertiele has also recommended that we bring on a data entry assistant to help in tracking and reporting on all Wise Place programs and clients. Until recently, reporting to CDBG and ESG had been handled by our accounting staff. Starting in March, I will be coordinating the quarterly reporting with Bertiele and with our program staff. Outreach obviously is key to reaching and increasing the number of Santa Ana residents that we serve. We have always collaborated with local homeless service providers and other community leaders and nonprofits. We have a new commitment to broaden our outreach to 211, to Phoenix House, and to The Villa by providing monthly flyers on our services, making sure we have consistent emails and phone calls to community partners, and by expanding our online presence. When submitting our funding request, we attempt to estimate how many Santa Ana residents we will serve in the coming year. We have relied on historical data to make these projections. However, this is not always an accurate production, a predictor, excuse me. For example, in 2017, 2018, we anticipated serving a total of 40 women, 10 per quarter from Santa Ana residents. In actuality, the number of Santa Ana residents we served during that 12-month period was 24. This week, I asked our program manager, Demona Barlow, to report on the number of Santa Ana residents we have served from July until the end of this month. Thus far, we have served 24 Santa Ana women. However, based on the commitment to improvements on all the levels I have just mentioned, we are confident that we can reach our projection of serving 40 women by the end of the grant term, June 30th of 2020. As well, we are committed to reaching or exceeding the following program goals for all of our residents. Thank you. Of the women who stay in our program for at least three months, 100% will obtain or maintain employment. Of the same residents, a minimum of 70% will move to safe, affordable housing, and of the remaining residents, a minimum of 22% will move to appropriate second-stage housing. I'm going to skip, since I'm getting short on time, just to read a story from one of our residents. We've changed her name for confidentiality. Mary came to us in the fall after being referred by Domestic Violence Shelter. After entering Wise Place, she committed fully to our programs and took advantage of our many wraparound services. She met weekly with the counselor. She took advantage of bus passes and employment counseling. She worked with volunteers to update her resume and practice interviewing. She registered for work through One Stop. She reported that the counseling gave her the self-esteem to obtain two part-time jobs, and through Wise Place staff, she learned about other community services and enrolled in adult education night classes. After graduation last month, Mary was placed in permanent housing. She wrote a letter. "I want to thank you for the last three months that I have been a part of a Wise Place program. I see and feel the changes in my life thanks to you. I have learned to be more independent. I have found a job of my own, on my own, and have enrolled in school, both new to me and something I would not have had the courage to do before Wise Place. Thank you for your help and support and for allowing me to become the woman I have always wanted to be but did not know how to be. I want to thank you for your support and the opportunity to speak, and welcome any questions."
Thank you. I'll begin on my left with Vice Chair Santana.
Thank you, Chairman Ramos, and thank you for being here today. Wise House continues to do great work in the city, and I have nothing further to say, but thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Commissioner Vazquez.
I don't have any questions to thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Commissioner Tardif.
Thank you for your presentation. I don't have any questions.
Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Frazier.
Thank you for your presentation, and I've heard a lot of great things. I haven't been in California long, but your name has come up several times in very good graces. What I'm curious about is a lot of these programs, I'm looking for how the potential for morphing over the years comes, because we have a client, we have a lot of changes in our climate across the nation. We're seeing a lot more females in college than we're seeing males. We're seeing a lot of demographic switches, changes. And I'm noticing that you're serving a 25% of a population. Is there any plans for your organization to address that other 75% that may be consisting of single-parent families, or men who are head of household, or men who are the same demographic as these women, where they're single and they're unattached to children?
Right.
What are your plans? What is the plan for Wise Place to move into that possible demographic shift that we're...
Right. There are no plans to do so. We are committed to continuing to serve women. We find there's a real niche for this vulnerable population that is not served elsewhere or otherwise. One in four of the homelessness population is female, and that may continue to grow. It's hard to say, but I feel like the history of Wise Place has been in staying committed... One in four of the homelessness population is female, and that may continue to grow. It's hard to say. But I feel like the history of Wise Place has been in staying committed to that mission and that population, so there are really no plans to change that demographic.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Perez.
Question for staff. Do we have an update from our quarterly reports on their numbers?
Or their numbers?
Yes.
It's what you currently have now. They were funded to serve
Forty.
Forty. Yeah, fifteen.
December.
First quarter, yeah.
For the, from first, second quarter. She did mention, Amy mentioned, what is thirty?
Twenty-four through, from July through now.
Through now.
Right.
So, two things. I want to commend the work that you do. I mean, it's unbelievable, and I mean, I've heard of your organization for many, many years. I think the difficult part is there's a lot of organizations that are only just serving females. You know, as my colleague to my right, you know, stating our male population. So, and last year, your numbers were only serving sixty percent, which is a really, really low number for Santa Ana, and I'm sure you're doing a lot of other work in Orange County. I'm glad to, and I understand there is leadership change, and I understand things happen and things occur. So, I'm not saying change is focusing on females,
I understand.
But it's really just a more of, you know, we're making some very hard decisions, you know, and choices here.
Sure.
I'm glad you came, and I'm glad you said, "Yeah, you know what? This is what we did. This is what happened." And, you know, you said, "We're changing it around." I'm glad to hear your numbers are significantly increasing. It would be, when does the next quarter report is due to staff?
April fifteenth.
April fifteenth? Okay.
So, I understand your concern. We are very aware of that issue, and as I said, the reason I presented the remarks I did was I wanted to kind of take the bull by the horns and say, "We realize that perhaps we have not done the best job we could in stewarding our relationship with you and in reporting and broadening our impact in the Santa Ana residents, and so we're doing our best in this transition period to address that."
Absolutely.
And I'm not trying to be defensive. I'm just being honest, and now we're approaching this. I will say, and the pamphlets that I brought are not specific to Wise Place or our programs, but in addition to the work we are doing with the Wise Place Shelter, you may have heard that we have opened Safe Place as a transitional shelter by renovating our gym, and we do have sixty women every night sleeping there. I am not directly involved with Safe Place. It's a separate program, and it's funded separately, so I don't know the impact of how many of those women are Santa Ana residents, but we know many have come from the Civic Center in the Plaza area. As well, we are in the early stages of a capital campaign to renovate our existing space. We can really only shelter thirty-two women at a time in the Hotel for Women or in Wise Place, and so we would like to change that and expand into more permanent supportive housing, as well as our transitional shelter. But that's a few years down the road, and that's separate from the work we are doing and the work that CDBG has supported, but that's another way we're looking at how can we really broaden, because the need is there, how can we really broaden our impact?
Well, I'm really glad to hear that your number is twenty-four now, so it is showing, definitely moving in the right direction.
We're going on it.
So, thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
No further questions.
Thank you. I just want to say thank you very much for being here and presenting tonight. I do appreciate you addressing that major concern for us and giving us an update on where you are now. And just, I want to commend you for the work that you are doing. I know that you're serving a very vulnerable population, and I thank you for remaining committed to serving the population. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Good evening.
I would like to invite forward our next speaker to present their proposal, and that's the Young Men's Christian Association of Orange County for their YMCA Financial Assistance Program.
Hello. Good evening. My name is Sarah Stefan. I'm the Associate Development Director at the YMCA of Orange County. Thank you for having us today. I did not bring a PowerPoint presentation, but I just wanted to tell you briefly about this program. The Santa Ana Financial Assistance Program covers our programs in Santa Ana, which are our Sports and Aquatics Center on Alton Parkway, and also our after-school program, and our tutoring program, which is linked to the after-school program. So, a majority of Santa Ana does have their own government-funded after-school program. However, there are two schools that we serve that are actually intestine-unified, but they are in the city of Santa Ana. So, we have a YMCA after-school program there, and then we also offer tutoring. Financial assistance is offered only to low-income individuals, so the children in the program come from low-income families, the children in our sports program come from low-income families, and then there's also adults and families who utilize the swim program, swim lessons, swim passes, and soccer in the Sports and Aquatics program as well. The after-school program is five days a week, and it's not just a drop-in program. Children are given curriculum, homework support, they have kids in charge of a community program, they have STEM programming, and then our tutoring is in addition to that. Those programs, the after-school program can be impacted, and it's also because of the depth of the program, and it's not a drop-in program, it can be, even with the fifty percent discount, over two hundred dollars a month for the families. So, the tutoring is another option. If the child just needs extra tutoring two days a week, then they can come in two days a week and get tutoring. And then with our Sports and Aquatics program, we offer that seven days a week. We have soccer classes, soccer clubs, soccer clinics, and then we have soccer leagues, soccer leagues for the adults. And then for swim, we have swim lessons for all ages, from parent and me all the way up, and then we also offer family swim passes. And then in two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty, we're expecting to serve two hundred and sixty total with financial assistance in the Santa Ana programs, and two hundred and ten of those would be Santa Ana residents. And then I just wanted to, oh, shoot, sorry. I left my testimonial on my phone. I wanted to read a testimonial from a teacher of the after-school program speaking about her, a child named Suzette. Suzette has been struggling for many years now. She has an unstable home environment, as her father has experienced some emotional and financial crisis. Recently, Grandma has taken over her care. Grandma is a single parent and is not able to provide additional help for Suzette. Because of the Santa Ana CDBG funding, the YMCA was able to provide Suzette not only with childcare help after school, but also with after-school tutoring. A big difference has been observed in Suzette's persona. Last week, I spoke to her teacher, and she told me that Suzette is now turning in completed homework assignments regularly. Her school focus has improved tremendously, and her reading level has jumped two levels in a short time. Her tutor informed me that she is now able to focus on her work much better and is now completing as much as three math worksheets a day, as opposed to the two problems she would complete before. It brings us great joy when Suzette comes in with a big smile, wanting to let Grandma know how much effort she has demonstrated during the day. The program has made such an impact on her that she now comes in asking for work to improve on her skills. So, that's in our after-school program. And then in our Sports and Aquatics, this is from the director there. Ms. Luna, who has two children, broke down and cried in the office when she was awarded financial assistance for her two kids. She's a single mom with no income and has been robbed twice in the last few months. Because of the current Santa Ana CDBG funding, we were able to enroll her children in swim lessons and also in the soccer class. So, that's the impact it's having on the Santa Ana residents. Thank you so much.
Thank you. I'll begin on my left with Vice Chair Santana.
Thank you, Chair Ramos, and I like the work that you do. My nephew and nieces both attend the aquatic program, the soccer program. It's a fun environment, especially when the parents can engage and participate in the pool and even inside the outdoor rink, so it's good stuff. Nothing further, but continue doing the great work. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Commissioner Vasquez.
No, I don't have any questions, but thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Tardif.
Thank you for your presentation, and I'm really tempted to do YMCA for you, but I'll forego that.
Okay. Well, if you want to get up and do it, we can do it together.
Thank you. No questions.
Thank you. Commissioner Frazier.
Thank you for your presentation. I am the product of a YMCA childhood, also compounded with Boy Scouts, so I definitely have a deep appreciation for what the YMCA provides, especially in the Midwest, but moving out here, I'm glad to see that they have strong presence. What do you use to determine your low-income status? What is your status quo?
We use the HUD guidelines that the CDBG program sends out, and we follow those for all of our CDBG-funded financial assistance programs.
Okay. And then, so it looks like you're looking for a two-hundred percent participation over last year, where you had ninety-eight people. Previously, because I know that it looks like that we haven't funded you at the full request that you've had for the last year, what are you, how are you going to ensure that the participation is up to what you're?
So, one, two things that we'd like to do. One is they would like to increase the number of kids we serve in tutoring and the tutoring sessions we offer. So, we'll offer Tuesday, Thursday, but we could also offer a Monday, Wednesday, which would get additional students in and also give more after-school care to the kids that aren't in the full after-school program. And then in our swim program specifically, we would like to expand right now. We're trying to get funding to go further into the fall months with swim. Right now, we're mostly just running in the summer. We start in about late April, May, and go into early September. But if we had the funding, we could be running Parent and Me and swim lessons through, you know, October and going earlier in the year when there's still those warm months where they can be in the pool. So, with the funding with that, we could definitely expand it. And then we are, we just got a grant from Angels, and we're hoping to add a couple more soccer leagues as well. So, it's just a matter of having the fund, we kind of work within the funding we have and...
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Commissioner Perez.
No questions. Thank you.
Thank you. I also have no questions. Thank you for your presentation.
Thank you very much.
I would now like to invite forward our next speaker to present their proposal. That's going to be the Orange County Fair Housing Council, Fair Housing Council of Orange County. And very quickly, staff, I noticed they're not listed on the sheet. Do we have any information for their numbers? Oh, sorry, they are. Thank you. Let me begin when you're ready.
Oh, take your time.
Okay. You're good.
Oh, I like to say, "Are you Mr. Flores?"
Yes. Nice, and you promised you a lot, but I'll never make you thank you so very much.
Good afternoon. First of all, I want to thank you for letting us basically come here this evening, and then I want to thank you for allowing us to service your city for another year. I'm the president and CEO of the Fair Housing Council of Orange County. I've been in that position for ten years. I want to tell you a little about what your money is funding us for. We're a HUD-certified counseling agency. We've had that certificate for almost thirty years. With that particular certificate, we were able to apply for three different HUD grants. A HUD comprehensive grant, what that does, that allow us to see individuals on a daily basis that walk into our office with problems, where we can keep files on them. We do a lot of mediation and conciliations, and we have certified mediators, not just individuals that basically saying they are mediating. Our mediators have worked for Orange County courts before. We have an outreach and education program that I think is the best in the country. The reason I say that is because we work with some of the largest management companies in Southern California. We work with Beverly Hills property, Labrie Management, the Beaumont Company, RW Shelby, the Metteranium Group that's in Santa Barbara. Yes, we get a lot of our trainings, basically, that's referred to us from the Department of Justice, from the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development, and from DFPH, the Department of Fair Employment and Housing. The reason I say that, because that brings money into our agency, and I'm very proud of that. Basically, we have landlord tenants. HUD is now requiring that all landlord tenant counselors be certified by two thousand twenty. Our counselors have one more process they have to go through before the three of them will be ready to take the test that HUD is requiring. I also sit on NAVA, that's the National Fair Housing Alliance Board. We meet in Washington, DC, four times a year with everything that was going in political about FIP funding and the government closing down and CDBG cuts. I was in Washington eight times last year. I will be going there on March the twenty-seventh. On March the twenty-eighth, I will be meeting again with Senator Dianne Feinstein, with Senator Kamala Harris. The representatives I will be meeting with that date is Katie Porter, Gil Cuneras, Harley Rota, and Lou Corella. Lou, I've met with several times. The other three will be new and added. And what we discussed there is how important money is, the CDBG is, to Orange County. Everybody has a myth that everybody in Orange County is rich. It isn't. Low income in Orange County for one person is sixty-one thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars. My whole staff is below low income. So, we definitely, what we need here is more affordable housing throughout Santa Ana and throughout Orange County. So, I am there with them, fighting, letting them know the importance of CDBG is for Santa Ana and the other cities that we basically contract with. And if you look at our statistics here for the last year, we were supposed to do in our contract thirty-nine outreaches. We ended up with sixty-four. The extra money that we get through these three contracts gives us the money to have staff do the extra work, because you have to realize, the statistics that we show here, basically, we say that we had, I think it's four thousand and six hundred individuals that we basically serviced last year, but you have to realize, those are the ones that we were able to count. They were not the ones that were undocumented. We deal with a lot of individuals here in Santa Ana that's undocumented, and the information that you require, the city for CDBG require, they don't want to give. As long as I'm in this position, we're going to service anyone and everyone that walks in our door. But as I said, I don't know why I can't find it now. Let me see. Oh, one just moment. Oh, wrong side, sorry. Last year, we serviced four thousand, six hundred and eighty individuals, and that came to nine hundred and seventy households, and that's not included, as I stated, the individuals that's basically undocumented. How do we help them? We've had a few, we've been able to convince that there's litigation going on. We had one family, basically, that was undocumented, but their children were born here, so the money they received was put in a trust fund for the children, but making their parents responsible for it. But, you know, we're here to service individuals. We can't make them do anything, but we spend a lot of time threatening inappropriate landlords, that the things that they do are illegal, and if those particular complainants won't go after them, we definitely have the power to do so. So, if there's any questions, I don't know if my five minutes are up or not, but if there's any questions, I'm more than happy to accept them. And once again, I want to tell you how much we love working our offices here in Santa Ana. My staff loves the work that they're doing. We're a staff of ten. They're very dedicated. Everybody has laptops. They work a lot from home because funds and things have been cut tremendously, and I want you to know that I wouldn't be as good as everyone say I am if I didn't have the staff that I have behind me. And once again, I want to tell you how much we love working our offices here in Santa Ana. My staff loves the work that they're doing. We're a staff of 10. They're very dedicated. Everybody has laptops. They work a lot from home because funds and things have been cut tremendously. And I want you to know that I wouldn't be as good as everyone say I am if I didn't have the staff that I have behind me.
Thank you. I'll begin with Commissioner Perez.
Denise, thank you for your presentation. Thank you for your passion. Thank you for bringing alive your feelings and your emotions. Your proposal was very well written and I would love to tour your facility. So thank you. Congratulations.
You're so very welcome.
Thank you. Commissioner Frazier.
Yes, thank you for your presentation. I too would like to see the facility, if that's ever available. I guess a couple of my questions are, so you're, you work hand in hand with the Housing Authority and one of your statements was to, to increase the amount of viable housing opportunities for people in Santa Ana, Orange County. What specific things are you planning on with the CDBG funding? What specific things are you planning on doing that with, or attaining those goals?
Well, you know what? CDBG funding, we only have certain things we can work with. The three grants that I have, I can cover all of Orange County and those are kind to open. I know that we have a communication with the community housing. I met a young lady the other day and I think that it's a fun, wait, friendship shelter. And basically, with the new individuals that I'll be meeting with in Washington, hopefully they have a more open mind to stating that I'm not asking for low income housing. Because when you say low income housing, people think that people have to be dirt poor. We need affordable housing. I have individuals coming into our office where mom and dad are both working and they're living in a car. Because a lot of Orange County properties were built on bond units. Are you guys aware of bond units? That means that the builders got a tax break if they let a lot of the units be low income with their maturity date is coming up. And they're saying, oh, we've loved, we've had you for the last 15 years and your rent's 1,500, but now if you can pay 39 after your 60-day notice, we'd be glad to have you. I don't know anyone in this office that, who can go from that type of rent to pay the type of rent that they're asking for. And it's really bad to have a family sit in your office and you have no place to send them.
My other question is, I noticed that you had several events throughout the year that, that kind of are for specialty groups, the LGBT, Women's Quality Day, and Native Americans. What other types of events are you partnered with that may address other demographic people who are low income and utilize the housing?
We do, you know what? Those were events that we had at our office, but if you look through all the different places that we go, we realize that it's a lot of individuals when you go to back to school night.
Right.
It's a lot of them when you go to the YMCA. And with our new contract grant, we're hitting the colleges. The colleges, because you know what? What people sort of realize, housing is the core of an individual. Where you live determines most of the type, the transportation, where you work, the medical you get, the schools your children go to. So those are the places that we basically want to hit to let individuals know. And something no one should ever talk about, hate crimes have gone up in Santa Ana and throughout Orange County. We want to be able to get out to the police departments to let them know, these are things that they need to handle.
I have no further questions.
Thank you. Commissioner Tardif.
Thank you for your presentation. I don't have any questions, but keep going strong.
Thank you so very much.
Thank you. Commissioner Vuskas.
I don't have any questions. Thank you.
Thank all of you once again. And if it's ever anything that you can think of that you would like for us to do, please don't hesitate, David, to contact us. And the last thing, April is Fair Housing Month. We're having an excellent luncheon on April the 10th, where all of you be, will be invited. We'll send the information to David and he'll get it to all of you. And thank you again.
Thank you. We just, we might have questions as well. Sorry. We're not done.
You're nothing.
We're not, we're not done asking questions.
Oh, I'm sorry?
It's okay.
Vice Chair Santana.
Thank you, Chairman Ramos. It's okay, Ms. Gatto. I'm glad you're here today because it seems like you are a person that walks the walk, talks the talk. And I'm glad that we have someone like yourself here informing us of, you know, of all the struggles folks face when it comes to meeting and meet for rent. I don't have any questions because I, I see you have a very busy, robust agenda. This right here is, and I'm going to go home and read tonight. I love it when something like this is in my possession because it seems like it's so easy, it's not overly glamorified, it's just, the information is here. An invitation, I look forward to working with you and I'm thrilled for your passion and I'm sure you and David are going to have a lot of communication and we'll be seeing a lot of each other, or more of David, doesn't really matter. But as long as, you know, you keep us in the loop and see how we can help or be of assistance, please let us know.
And I have to say, be totally honest, it's fantastic when you could work with a great person like David. Because I have other cities and individuals aren't as easy to work with. So David, I definitely appreciate you.
Good job, David.
Thank you for being easy, David. It's okay.
It's okay, David, take it.
Thank you. And then I just have one main question.
Yes.
Do you have any attorneys on your staff?
No, we don't have any attorneys. We use two attorneys. One of them is Chris Brancard. He's one of the leading civil rights attorney in the country. And I'm very proud to say I've been in fair housing for 29 years. And in 29 years, I've never lost a case. And you can Google, I've had some of the largest cases in the country because we don't file frivolous lawsuits. When I said that I worked with the largest management company, all these management companies were, we had issues with them. They did a training with us. Now they pay us yearly to do the training with their employees so they're safe, on a safe side. Everyone I do a training with gets my cell number. Because trying to get me through my extension is difficult. But if you call me on your, on my cell, I will respond to you because I like to retire with a clean slate saying, in the 27 or 37 years, she never lost a case.
Thank you.
Oh, and also Margaret Elder.
Thank you. And then I have one additional question.
Yes.
To what extent are you able to assist tenants with any unlawful detainer notices?
We do. We have very few individuals. You know, prior to two years ago, we really had a lot of individuals coming in with unlawful detainers. We have very few come in now. But Dave Levy is on our staff and he's been there almost 25 years. So we do have the facilities to answer unlawful detainers.
Okay. Thank you. I'm really happy to hear that. I'll be sending people over to you.
Not a problem. Thank you so very much.
Thank you.
Really appreciate it.
Madam Chairwoman? I have one last question.
Oh, yes.
Because you brought it up, the assistant, the apartment management training that you, that you...
Yes.
So I'm aware of one that the city is providing. Are you guys partnering with the city for that training or do you know anything about that training?
Brent, uh?
I think there's a flyer in the Housing Authority office, but I didn't know if that was something...
Well, if it's the Housing Authority, but here in Santa Ana, then we're probably the ones that do it because we're the ones that do the training. If you would look on the brochure and stuff that I gave you, we are the ones that basically do that training. And we also do a lot of continuing education for realtors. I'm not an attorney, I'm a paralegal and I'm certified by the Department of Real Estate to do continuing education. And that's the way that we bring funding into the agency.
Perfect. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
At this time, we would like to hear from the public. If you wish to speak, please complete a request to speak form and provide it to the recording secretary. Set forward to the podium. You may voluntarily state your name and address and may be kind enough to limit your comments to three minutes. There, are there any members of the public that would like to speak? Now, seeing as there are none, recording secretary, are there any written communications?
No.
Thank you. Seeing as there are none, we will proceed. At this time, we would like to thank each speaker for their comments and let you know that your comments may, okay, that's a moment. Sorry. The public hearing is not closed.
Thank you.
Now, moving on to public comments on non-agenda items. Does the public have any comments that they wish to share with the commission? Please, now that you have three minutes to speak. There are no members of the public left. Moving on to staff member comments. Does staff have any comments they wish to share with the commission?
We do, Madam Chair. Just a few reminders. Want to remind everybody that the deadline to complete the evaluations for all the CDBG applications is March 5th. Staff will require at least a day or maybe two to evaluate all your evaluations, put together a graph for you, and possibly provide you with three possible scenarios of who to fund and how the funding can potentially go. And we'll present that on the March 7 meeting if you still want to continue with that meeting. So that's, it's already scheduled. If you would like to continue with that meeting, we'll have it and we'll do our presentation at that point so you, all of you can deliberate and make a decision. So on that note, are we still going to have the meeting on March 7 to deliver it?
I'll open that up to hear from commissioners, but just to provide some context. Last year, we each individually ranked the applicants, as we're doing this year, but we had no meeting afterwards to talk about our rankings and deliberate on the different options. So when we came together to just take a vote, it was very difficult. We didn't have the time that we needed to discuss that. So moving forward with this process, we decided early on that it would be best to have that deliberation meeting. And the commissioners that were present at that meeting were in agreement. So I just want to ensure that everyone is aware of that and that everyone is still okay with moving forward with that meeting.
I'm always in favor of any chance that we can improve the communication between ourselves and staffs.
Great.
Thank you. So in addition to that, if any of you haven't had the opportunity or don't have the capacity to review the applications because of maybe lack of a computer or internet, we can make a computer available on the 6-4 for you, or I can coordinate with the Santa Ana Work Center so they can make maybe one or two computers available for you to do, to complete your evaluation. So far, there's only one commissioner that's completed all the evaluations. So I hope you guys can possibly go home tonight and get some rest or tomorrow so you can complete the evaluations. And the process, the way this works is after you make your recommendations, we will bring it back to you for approval, a recommendation to the council on March 27, and council will approve in their meeting in April for full funding. I want to thank all of you for, for your time. We really, really appreciate all of you being here. I know it's a huge sacrifice, but I want to thank you for that. We did hear a lot of your comments and we're going to make some improvements in our program. One of the things I heard quite a few of you say, you want, you were asking the nonprofits about how they advertise or how do they reach out to the public regarding their programs. We're going to make ourselves available to do NICSs. So I am working with the 8th floor, the City Manager's Office, to do a NICSel once a month to promote all of our nonprofits. And in addition to that, we're going to do email blast. And on our CDBG page on our website, we're going to put pictures up and do success stories of, of our nonprofits so that the public can see and you guys can see as well of all the hard work that they're doing. And I did receive the invitation from Denise regarding the luncheon for the fair housing. I received it this evening before coming here, so I'll be happy to forward that to you tomorrow morning. She did invite everybody, so I'll forward the invitation to everybody. And I think that's all I have.
Thank you. Are there any other staff members with comments? Great. Thank you. Moving on to commission member comments. Let's begin with Commissioner Tardif.
I'd like to thank the staff for, for hard work in setting all this up both evenings and thank the applicants for participating and thank my colleagues for their great questions and comments. Again, thank staff for accommodating my temporary handicap.
Thank you. Commissioner Frazier.
Yes, I wanted to thank staff. Between last year being my first year going through this process and this year kind of having that veteran status, I guess you'd call it, this was a much easier process. I think it may have been the forum as well as how we split up the items. I'm kind of curious if the email blast includes current HUD Section 8 voucher recipients? As we have a database of those email addresses that are provided when people complete their application through the website. I'm curious as to if we're reaching out to tenants that are current as well as those tenants may have additional people that are prospective voucher program users, et cetera. Have we, have we engaged them as an, as additional outreach? But overall, thank you, thank you very much for the packet setup through the last, or the last two meetings have been fantastic. That was the greatest help. Having everything that we needed just in case we forgot something was really helpful. And having, having carbs and caffeine, always helpful, always helpful. So thank you to staff and definitely thank you people that had, that gave us the presentations.
Thank you. Commissioner Perez.
Thank you, Madam Chair. First and foremost, staff, you did an unbelievable job. I just want to thank you for the process, me being the new kid on the block. I thank you, David, for taking quite a few of my phone calls, I was just asking questions. One of the things that I just wanted to get a little bit of clarification, usually in a grant process, there's a rubric. Because when we look at the scores and we look at, as we grade each one of these proposals and we look at, you know, the first question, how does this program align with the city's strategic plan and meet requirements and our scores from zero to 15? It's some, some of them are just like a yes, no, it's either zero to 15. And then you ask a question where, you know, has this applicant demonstrated a need for a proposed program in Santa Ana? Without a rubric, a three or a four, a five is going to be different for all of us across the board. And I know for this year, it's going to be difficult to kind of have that, but I think those are just some of the issues that I'm, I'm going to see is as we grade this and as we grade this process. And I think in the future, having a rubric like, okay, does it, you know, when we have a new organization that's barely been in here, so do they automatically get a zero because they haven't provided any service in Santa Ana? You know? And I think without a rubric, a lot of it is really just subjective, you know, what I believe. And I think as we move forward through this process and having a fair process, and that's why we talk about fair housing, fair process, it will help all of us in that. And in addition, I think, you know, with the questions in regards to how we count our population and we serve, I think that's another area that I think moving forward in this year, you know? But I, I think for my fellow commissioners, like, I think that's why it's important for us to meet because in hearing someone else saying, well, Jim, actually I graded them a 10 here, and I, oh, okay, I could see why where I graded someone a four or a five, you know? Where it's like, oh, okay, there's different insight, there's different information, or as you look at the documents. So I think it is going to be key and critical as we go into, you know, deliberations kind of in that process. I'm a little curious, when you say you're going to propose to us, because I really think what should happen, I don't think you should propose to, to us the funding. I really think it should be given to us as really, this is the rate, this is the score across the board. And as we deliberate and we start taking a look, and we might all be in agreement like, yep, looks good, looks good, looks good, looks good. But I think, I, I don't understand...
Sure.
Yeah.
So when you fill out the evaluation, the last question on the evaluation is what is your proposed funding?
Dollar amount.
So what we're going to do is we're going to get the average and that's what we're going to provide to you. So we're not going to make it up, we're just going to get the average from all of your evaluations and propose that to you, then you can decide if you want to increase it or decrease it. But we're just going with averages.
So are you taking the top vote getters and then breaking on the average that way?
So if all of you evaluate America on track, right?
Yes.
And all of you say that, you know, different funding amounts, we're going to get the average of that?
Oh, I see, the average of ours, okay.
Correct.
That, that makes clarification.
This is what the commission, the average, what you decided that you were gonna fund, the average.
And then based off each of our individual questions, each organization will also receive an overall score. So if I recall, they take the average of the overall score for like America on Track. Say America on Track gets 100 and 100's the highest, they'll be number one on the list. And then it'll come down in that order and we'll see the average of the funding as well. So last year, what it looked like is, okay, realistically, we have this much money, we can fund maybe 15 organizations at their maximum or 19 at their minimum, or then we get to decide at what level we want to fund them. And we can also move organizations out of order if we really feel like one really should get funding, but they didn't make that cutoff or whatever.
Excellent. Thank you for the clarification.
Sure.
No further questions.
And by the way, that's not set in stone. Last year, we went to council, I don't know if you guys remember, but we went to council. The commission made a recommendation and council decided that they were gonna fund two additional ones. So, yeah, it's not set in stone, so please keep an open mind through this process.
Thank you. Commissioner Frazier, is it immediate to the conversation?
It is, yes. To that degree, whenever you guys provide the, whenever staff provides the statement of the average, is there a way that you can also show on that same document, the requested top end, bottom end, and what the proposed percentage is of the applicant?
Sure.
Thank you.
One more, one more further thing. I know I asked previously to staff why staff is not part of the process and I know before I came on, the commission decided not to have staff part of that process. I just want, in a closed session, I really think it would be key and critical to have David part of the process as for me, being inclusive is also including, including those that will be managing, supervising, and making sure they're in compliance. So to some extent, to some, to a certain extent, I would love for David to grade part of the process and at least have that in the room. I know we've agreed with the commission before I came on board that we're not going to have them part of it, but anytime I've been part of a grant process and I'm an independent person, part of a process, usually the individual that's gonna administer those contracts or administer those grants has also gone through the application and we may as well take kind of a look. So I am throwing out a proposal, potentially, I would love to have David grade it. I know he's not gonna be in the room, but it would be good to see from city staff that administer these contracts to have some type of a process and be inclusive in the process.
I'll take comments from other commissioners, but just being mindful and aware of the conversation that took place with the commissioners that were at the meeting at that time. I would like to move forward with the decision that was made, which was to only consider in those averages, the rankings of commissioners. But from my understanding, staff would still be in the room and we can still, David will be in the, in the room and we can engage with David to whatever extent we want. I don't know, David, if you or the department was considering having your own rankings of some sort? I just remember the only part that we did not, the only thing that the commission really said was that we did not want staff's recommendations to be a part of an average.
And I agree to that.
But I don't know if you were considering doing a ranking of your own and sharing that.
Can I just say that last year, this commission was upset because we wanted not to include city staff in this. I do understand your point of view, but it's a, it's a little different because we're just barely making form, we're missing a couple of voices, but I mean, I think last year, we were far apart, far spread as far as who we selected, but from like, I'm a little confused right now.
Well, all I'm asking.
I just started a thought, yes.
No, and the reality is, all I, I'm not gonna, I, I'm going to respect the decision of this commission, okay? What I would like to add is I would still love to have David's score in the room. If we wanted to take a look at it, we would have that option too. If we don't want to take a look at it, we don't have to. But I still think including city staff in this decision, in my opinion, is part of being inclusive. And when I asked some questions, I said, "Okay, that's interesting. I don't know the background and I don't know if previously in times they've made decisions and commission felt they wanted to be part." I just believe having one person that's on the city staff, having their information in front of us, especially as a new individual, someone that's worked with these organizations, the staff that first get to meet them, come over, shake their hand in the Miller presentation is, has the respect of this community.
I think last year, what was echoed was that staff can be biased when it comes to the organization and because they have a past with some of these organizations applying. That's one thing that does stand out. Second was, it's that and it's.
Well, I think we're all, to a certain extent, I mean, you're on the board of one of them, your family participates in.
Almost in all of them.
Yeah. So, so.
I wanna maybe pause the conversation and just ask David if you even have the capacity to do this before we decide whether or not we would, we would like for that to take place?
So staff didn't consider that as an option for this year. We were gonna be complying with the commission's wishes from the meeting in October, so we weren't planning on doing this. I think maybe we could consider that for next year if the commission would like to consider that. We are constantly improving on the process, so if that could be an improvement, then we can consider that for next program year.
For this year, you don't, do you, do you feel that you have the capacity to turn rankings around in the next five days?
I do not. I have the city applications coming in on the 5th as well. I expect 15 of those applications to come in, so I have to do reviews and approval of those applications. So since I wasn't anticipating and doing this, I didn't plan for it, so.
So, I thank you for bringing that up. I thank you, Richard, for sharing your, your concerns and comments on that. Maybe it's something that we can discuss after the deliberation as to whether or not we would like the city staff to participate in that way so that they can find a little, a little bit ahead.
Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Frazier, did you have something you wanted to add?
Yeah, to the specific question, especially being in a tenant position where I often find myself in deliberation specifically designed this way. Because every one of these programs that has come before us affect the 2,700 people that I'm supposed to be here to represent myself, Mr. Vazquez, yet we don't get a legitimate voice when it comes to voting. So if staff is available to ask questions, I think that would be invaluable as we're gonna be available to get way in on our, on our choices, even though he may not, you may not be able to have the availability to score it, that, that experience with these individual, even though they may be biased, we're all gonna be biased, none of us are altruistic. So, so that bias, you know, coming from the city of how these organizations work with the city could be, could be invaluable.
Thank you. I'll continue with comments this way and if anyone else has comments on the end, we can take them. Commissioner Vazquez?
I just want to say, I want to start with Commissioner, we are, especially, especially because of our, for, for, especially.
Thank you. Vice Chair Santana?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chairman. I want to start with thanking David for the coffee. The Don Francisco Coffee is working miracles here and the city staff are providing free validation. This is a good venue and setting for this applicants. Last year, we were in annex and it was a little difficult, but it was fun reviewing applications with this board. We asked really good questions, you know? To close would be, you know, to see what happens in the next couple of weeks when closing day, just sit down and just, you know, work together. I think we're all here because we're very passionate of folks we present in the areas of our communities and just do your due diligence and thank you so much and welcome to the board, I forgot to mention that. And that's it for me.
Thank you. And I just want to echo what has already been said. Thank you very much, staff. And I also want to highlight two workshop invitations that were sent to us by Bianca yesterday. So one of them is from March 11th and that's titled, "Working with Community Land Trusts." It's gonna be Monday, March 11th from 8:30 to 12:00. The second one is gonna be on Wednesday, March 13th from 9:00 a.m. to 11:00 a.m. and that one is titled, "Opportunities for Affordable Housing with Supportive Services." So I would just like to encourage everybody on the commission to attend either or both workshops if you are available. I think it'll help us just broaden our knowledge so that we can better understand proposals and ask better questions when we see these items come up to us for votes. So are there any last commission member comments or questions? Okay, seeing as there are none, this meeting is adjourned at 7:40.